We're recording now, and if Dan wants the recording, then we can give him the link when it's posted.
Great.
So Madam Clerk, the the recording for the public will be, when they see the council, it will be the picture we're seeing for those on Zoom, correct?
Um, correct.
Okay, so if anybody can't hear, please just politely raise it, and that way we'll make sure that we know who's speaking. Because we, we don't see you clearly, completely clearly.
Okay.
We'll know each other's voices, so I think it'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I just want to, now that we're recording this meeting, say that I objected to the recording of this meeting on such short notice. This was obviously brought up by a few people who wanted. My suggestion was that we adjourn this meeting and schedule it for another day with public notice. So anybody and everybody would know that it's being recorded. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, great. So back to my original question to be called. Um, would you, would you or Clay, uh, or Tom like to kick this off, Clay?
Um, I'll kick it off. Um, Tom and I are both available to, um, answer questions or respond. Um, and I think as the council knows and members of the audience, the workshop is an informal process. This is meant to stimulate conversation and dialogue, and that's what we're here to do tonight. Um, this is not the informal sort of council item that comes on a regular agenda where, you take a vote on it and there's some formal recommendation and stuff. We've, uh, you know, had conversations, I think, um, informally, um, over, um, probably several months at this point about different ways in which, um, we interact with, um, development, uh, applications, whether they be land use or zoning amendments or things of that nature. I want to preface this by saying that, you know, we are kind of a somewhat unique moment in time. Um, I know we always talk about development coming, but you know, it's actually, it is actually coming now. Um, we've got, uh, two, um, fairly significant projects that draft environmental documents will be out during calendar year 2024. Um, and of course that starts the process for those to start working their way through to the planning commission and ultimately to the city council for review. Um, both of those applications have requested, um, or applied for, um, development agreements. Um, so, um, that process will also, um, be, uh, be kicking off. So I think it's timely was to have a discussion, uh, about, um, how we want to kind of move forward. I kind of look at this in, uh, the context of, um, uh, like playing a game, uh, whether it's a sporting game or checkers or whatever. If everybody that's playing the game has differentiated what the rules are, you, you've got chaos. So the idea here is that at least we all get on the same page in terms of what the, what the ground rules are. And then, you know, we can kind of go from there. I think we said it here in the staff report, and it goes without saying. Ultimately, the council is the arbiter of any of these applications that come before the city. And you guys can set, you know, up your, um, your protocols and how you want to approach these things. Um, you don't have to be driven by past, uh, experiences or past, uh, lives in which we've done things. You can do things differently, obviously, uh, going forward. The purpose of tonight was kind of in part to kind of just give you the benefit of kind of past experiences. Um, I would consider that, you know, for the most part in the time that I've been here, um, we have dealt, uh, with this, this kind of issue through kind of norms as opposed to specific policies. Um, it has just kind of been the way things were done, uh, historically. Uh, council members felt comfortable with it, and so that was kind of just the way we did, did business, business. We didn't, we don't have, you know, resolutions and actual policies for you to, you know, refer back on. That may be something you want to consider, but, um, we can, we can discuss that. So the, um, the first thing, um, in terms of kind of past practices, um, you know, the, and it kind of goes without saying that, you know, the negotiations with her, with a developer ultimately would be over like a development agreement, and that is the purview of the, of the entire city council. Um, and not, um, you know, and another body, although the planning commission does play a role in terms of reviewing the development agreement. Um, and it's, um, you know, kind of up to the city council whether or not you want to have a, uh, subcommittee process for that or not. Um, I think there's some pros and cons to that. Um, you're pretty far along. I mean, I think the, the subcommittee process, I think, works well when you're kind of, um, doing, uh, that early review of things that you're kind of getting ideas out on the table. We're, we're much more fully baked at this point where the applicants have decided what they want to present to, to do for consideration. Um, and, um, you know, it's ultimately going to be a big group process in reviewing that. So my own personal take on this is that the subcommittee process probably doesn't really uh, make a whole lot of sense at this juncture in the, in the, in the, in the process. Um, so the, uh, way we have done this historically is, is that, uh, the council as a whole, um, deliberates and provides direction, uh, to, uh, to me. Um, and I work with the city staff. I work with our consultants. I work with the city attorney, the legal staff, um, in terms of actually being the face to the developers. Um, I think that reduces the confusion that sometimes can come. Um, and not, not to speak ill of developers, but, uh, they will try to play people off against each other to their particular interest and, um, you know, by letting them have kind of, uh, that kind of access. Uh, sometimes they can get, I think, confused in terms of where the cities really add on some stuff. And you also can, I think, potentially be in a difficult position in terms of, you know, how you communicate with them. So I think it's better, it's a somewhat of a top-down process for sure. Um, but ultimately, I think you'll, you know, should take comfort in the fact that you as a group are always going to make these decisions. So that's, I think, the first, um, part of it. Um, the second part on, with regards to, to meetings, and we may be kind of past this at this point in terms of just where we are at in the process. But, and, and I think you've heard me say this many times over the years is that, you know, if you, if, as council members, if you do take meetings with people who have business or potentially will have business before the city for, you know, uh, applications for development or applications for zoning amendments or, or, or whatever it may be, that you invite somebody from city staff to be a part of that. Um, and I'm always available or whoever comes after me, I'm sure will always be available. Um, or some other person so that you, you, first of all, you have, um, in the worst case, I guess, uh, a witness to what was, was being said. But you also have, um, you know, the situation where, uh, you know, you, you've got some city staff support in the, in the, in that conversation and stuff. Um, and you know, some of you have been in those meetings within, I, I usually stay fairly quiet, but I'm there to just kind of make sure that I'm hearing what, you know, is being said. And it's always, I think, um, useful for you as council people to make sure that you, you've got, uh, a witness, not, not just for yourself, but you know, there, there may be the ti- there are times I've seen over the years where members of the community found out that that council member X met with, you know, this particular applicant, and they get spun up on what they think might have happened. And, and having somebody, uh, you know, um, that was there, I think is, uh, sometimes helpful. Um, uh, and clipped on, put you on the spot, but remember, many years ago, we went and met with Mayor Lee in, in San Francisco. And the fact that you had, I think, city staff there at that meeting, because there was a lot of San Francisco city staff, and I think you were mayor at the time. Um, you know, I think was beneficial to make sure that there wasn't any misunderstandings on, you know, what was being said and what was being communicated. So I think that's always very helpful, um, to, um, to the council. Um, we've kind of already kind of gone, gone over the subcommittee process. Um, you know, we did have one example many years ago where there was joint city councils, planning commission, subcommittee and met with, uh, um, I think the developer that was called, um, Healthcare Properties at the time. They built, uh, the project that's now called Ashore. Um, and we did have, um, a couple of meetings. Um, but again, I, I think we're going to pass that before in the, in the process. Um, but I just point that out as that was, that was done at that particular time. And then, you know, the other piece of this, I think, is probably, you know, the, the, um, you, you may very well want to pass down your, your expectations to the planning commission, because the planning commission is going to be in a quasi judicial role here, um, in terms of, um, their interactions with, uh, with applicants. Um, other considerations, um, you know, the, there, there's kind of this really, I think, kind of somewhat fuzzy area that, you know, obviously as council people, you're listening to your constituents all the time. Talking to them, meeting with them, you're, you're getting input from them. Um, that's absolutely to be expected. Um, some of those constituents may be involved with, with interest groups of some sort or another. Um, and so yeah, I think you just have to be careful that there isn't an impression in terms of, you know, as some sort of negotiation over some issue. Um, and then, you know, one of the ways I think we can think about dealing with that, because we know that that has caused some a little bit of trouble at times, is that, you know, maybe we have an item on the council agenda that, that says, you know, here's the status of development applications, and the city staff can say, okay, the quarry development, we anticipate the EIR coming out next week, and then council member X can say, I had, I didn't talk to so-and-so or talk to this group, or maybe supervisor Canada called, called me about this, and I just want to let this full council know. So it's a transparency issue. Um, it's a, um, I think, just a, you know, communication piece of it. Uh, the more all of us are aware of what's, the pieces that are happening and stuff, you know, I think are sometimes helpful. Um, because, you know, sometimes, you know, I can even speak for myself. I had, there's times when I hear about things and, and I was like, okay, and then I, then I started putting the dots together. You know, it's like, and then it's like, okay, now, now, you know, maybe something's going on at the county level that, you know, we need to address or something. So it just, it's just information. I think it just, uh, kind of helps. I think that's really kind of the, the meat and potatoes of this. Um, this is again, a workshop. It's the idea of the, the five of you kind of having a conversation around all this um, and deciding, you know, how you want to move forward and, uh, uh, city attorney wants to say anything at this point in time?
No, I think you summarized the staff report well, Madam.
Okay, so are there any questions on, and I think we've just gone through step two so far, the meetings portion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, for item two, does any of the council have questions about this?
I think this is all stuff we all know very well.
I think, I think we do know it, but I'm not sure. My only question, and this is for legal, um, I think it is a good idea to have the report out that I met with whomever I met with, with staff involved, you know, and they just wanted to get a pulse of whatever. Um, but is that legally required that if a council member does meet with someone who is either an interest group or a developer, that they must report out? Or is that just something that we wish they would do?
Yeah, you're, I mean, I might speak for the attorney, but it's definitely not a legal requirement. This is just a matter, you know, of enhanced communication.
I don't think it's going to be a legal requirement for, uh, this city. There, the law changed, I believe, two years ago, and if a developer makes a donation of, I believe it's $250, then there's certain reporting requirements that kick in for the developer that might lead to a disclosure of a council member, um, meeting with them or a supervisor. I do not believe that that's a triggered, uh, in the city. I know that I'm told if, um, if anybody calls about a campaign or thing, uh, they're not really supposed to be calling City Hall unless they're calling the clerks, or I'm told, and I've heard nothing like that.
So it's a money trigger, not a conversation trigger?
It's a developer money trigger. And most developers are not, they're well aware of it, and they're not making these donations because they don't want to, um, be prevented from having a meeting.
Okay, okay, that's, that, that was my question. Um, anybody else have a question so far?
You know, I kind of like have a comment, you know, kind of generate, uh, some discussion.
First, we're doing questions, and then we'll go back to comments.
Uh, okay. All right, then that's fine, then I'll, I'll hold off then.
Questions? Anybody else? No? Um, then I guess we can go to comments and Cliff.
All right, thanks. So, um, you know, sometimes you go to a conference or you go to some kind of event, say, housing or transportation, and, you know, you might meet someone, you know, from, you know, either, you know, from an agency or government official. Um, I think, you know, perhaps, you know, having those conversations and then reporting that to the council, I think this makes good sense. I, I agree with you. I don't think it needs to, you have to do it, or you have to remember to do it. But I think, uh, you know, maybe if you do have one of those types of conversations, um, of course, it depends upon the subject matter, and if it's pertinent to something that is going on, like in Baylands or, um, you know, it's some other development perhaps in town. Um, yeah, bringing it up, I think would be fun.
So like if you were at Progress, for example, and like, you know, developers, like Baylands is usually always present. I feel like that progress. Um, and so like if they, you know, pulled you aside after a panel or something, that's like, you didn't plan the meeting, it just like happened because you were in the same place at the same time. Is that where you're like with that type of circumstance?
Well, I wasn't thinking about like having a discussion with developer, more like, you know, like when you do go to an event like that, people are always asking us, you know, what's going on with your project, rather constantly, embarking us with, with questions. And, you know, and of course, we just tell them, right, you know, it is what it is, you know, we're waiting on the developer. Um, you know, but sometimes you might have a group, like say you go to the progress seminar, and there's housing advocates that really want to see the housing happen.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, you know, you don't want to be like, sorry, I'm not talking to you. I mean, but you, you want to at least be cordial and, um, but I think then expressing that, you know, to council, I mean, if, if you're so inclined, I think it's okay. So yeah, okay.
Well, it'd be one thing if, I think, if you were approached somewhere, um, by, let's say, a housing group, and you said, hell no, no housing in Brisbane. I, I think you may want to report that back to the council, or if you said, oh gee, we really want a whole bunch more housing. I think you'd want to report that back, because I think that's, you know, a pretty big discussion instead of where are we in general on housing. Um, you know, I think that there's, there's a co- a fine line, and, you know, I would think that this is something that we could agree to do. I mean, there's, again, no legal enforcement to force us to report out with our casual meetings. Um, and I think it's a little bit, you know, the fine line is going to be, say, we're talking about quarry development. And I could be talking to, I'm going to call Michelle out here. I could be talking to Michelle, and she can tell me that she likes or doesn't like something that is maybe on the table, or maybe not. Um, and that's one thing. And then there's, if I'm talking to her as a member of San Bruno Mountain Watch, where she says, and, and she has called me and said, I want to ask a question as a, as a constituent, you as a council member.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay, let me put a different hat on, because I'm going to have a different conversation when she's asking me as a board member for San Bruno Mountain Watch for an opinion or a promise or anything else, which I certainly can't give promises. But, you know, there's a different context that that needs to be in. And I think that's a difference in how you speak to people. And when you're speaking to them, it's like, oh, hey, I could get you this great deal where you get, everybody gets a baby. Um, you know, and I can't make a promise that everybody gets a baby, so to speak. So that makes sense to everybody that, you know, it can be different depending on the context that you're having a conversation in. Um, and especially when many of us wear more than one hat. You know, we wear a hat as a decision maker. We make it, wear a hat maybe as a campaigner, where we could be making promises that, again, everybody gets a baby. Um, and, you know, because you can say almost anything when you're campaigning.
Right.
All right, so, um, just, so Terry, yeah, are you going to go like each, each number, and then like have comments or have questions and then go to comment?
Well, I think the subcommittee process, we already took, um, uh, I mean, we may have.
I mean, I think counted on the majority of the whole, I think, is, I think, you know, uh, staff's recommendation is, is a good one.
Well, steps.
For the subcommittee one?
Oh.
Yeah, I, you know, where the council continues to sit as a whole committee, as committee of the whole, excuse me, reviewing the projects with staff and outside experts, so that direction to the city manager comes with the full body. That, I think, is, uh, appropriate. I don't, I'm just throwing it out there, I think it's, I think it's.
So relative to the subcommittees, we've had some issues in the past, and I hope we don't repeat it. Um, and if there are two people on a subcommittee, I think at old times, the two people on that subcommittee need to be in attendance for any conversation, whether it's with a consultant who we're paying. Because if we're having conversations as individuals with consultants that we're paying $350 or $500 an hour as an individual, then we have to go back and spend that money again when there's two people present. So for me, I, I would like to see us really tighten up anything and everything to do with subcommittees. If you're on a subcommittee with another person, you don't go solo on any.
We, in, in the past, and, and not on this council, you know, we had some other issues where, you know, subcommittee, uh, legal and, um, consultants were overused. Um, and, and then the process didn't really get completed well because of that. And I know it's happened a little bit here in the last few years also, but I, I think that's a really important consideration. You know, especially with the subcommittee that's working with a consultant.
Correct. And, and to me, I am very mindful of every dollar we spend of taxpayer money. And when somebody says something to me like, oh, it's only $10,000. It's only $10,000 of taxpayer dollars that we're spending. So if waste is not something that I want to see us to in any way should be postponed moving forward, so.
Well, I think, I think especially when we're dealing with a, with a consultant, that we can put a rule in place as to that, that, um, individual members of the subcommittee don't, or even members of the council willingly be calling that person, that it should go through a designated person to, um, you know, if, if you had a question for the consultant, it would go through the city manager, where it would get routed through the normal reporting out from this consultant. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I just don't want to waste any more money. I think we've wasted a lot of money in the past on many things. And, you know, I guess I come from a, a lack of mentality. I didn't grow up rich. So I'm very careful of what money I'm spending of yours and yours and yours.
And yours.
And, and mine, of course, but, you know, so I, I feel like we need to tighten that one up. But, you know, everybody needs to agree that we won't go outside of these boundaries and that we cannot individually be connecting with a, um, consultant to give them our spin on things, to then bring back to the subcommittee that has to pay again for this privilege.
Yeah, I would say the only, the only, um, instance where that wouldn't be the case would be if a consultant was doing like stakeholder interviews. Hmm. Like Terry Black did stakeholder interviews. We all had the ability to participate. They were one-on-one. That's already budgeted into the price that we all know that we're spending. But I would say like, you know, um, if we had, like, uh, we're going to have a consultant for Public Art, Nine Dot Arts, right? So that's a perfect, that's a perfect example where the Nine Dot Arts is going to speak to the whole subcommittee at once. And unless it's doing stakeholder interviews, you're not going to call them up and say, this is my vision for, the master, for the, you know, master plan, and I'm calling and saying, this is my vision for the master plan, because they're charging you, they're charging me, when we could have had a conversation at one time in a subcommittee meeting where all of the rest of the subcommittee members are present and have an equal voice at the table and equal time with the consultant. That's like an example of like, something coming up, right? So that's what you're, to, to clarify. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
I agree.
One for me, thank you.
Um, I, I see, Jason, you wanted to say something?
Yes, please.
You might need to come a little closer so that you're recording now that you're, maybe you could just roll up to the corner.
I'm rolling. Uh, so are we moving, uh, you, you see intention to move forward? Uh, because if I had a comment about the meetings portion, uh, number two?
Sure.
Great, awesome. This was so wonderfully put together. Thank you very much. I think it's great. Um, I guess I'd be very interested. I think this is a wonderful protocol, and it's, it's been supposedly reflecting what's been done in the past. And I guess I'd like to look around the table and say, is there an appetite? That if folks here are going to meet with a developer, will you commit to being with a member of the staff and putting a line item saying, I met with X and Y during the last time? Is there, is there?
Absolutely. I did that while I was mayor already.
I've already done that as.
I'm asking because if, I know, it's a small town. I think it's a great town, but it is a small town. And in, if people see an individual council person speaking to a developer, they talk. And they don't know what's being said. They take, don't know what's being said. So.
I didn't hear from you.
I, I agree.
Yes? Is that a yes?
Um, I have something I think I need to bring up. We got a letter from Dana Dilworth, and I read it. I don't know if any of the.
I read it.
I read it.
Yeah.
Okay. And I thought she was spot on, because she said, why are you going through this? You don't have the FEIR. And, and what has struck me by this is, to be honest with you, I don't know why we're discussing this tonight, and I'll tell you why. I think that, when, I'll speak for me, when I was elected, I feel like I took an oath to be responsive and responsible to constituents. Those are people that vote for me and don't vote for me. That's everybody in Brisbane, everybody. And why am I worried about negotiating when I don't even know what we're negotiating? We haven't asked the public yet. Shouldn't that come first? And shouldn't we be asking the public what's acceptable about negotiating? I'd like to know what the public thinks, and I don't mean just public in this room. There's a whole big public out there. So let me, let me frame it this way. If the council, sitting here, five of us, said we're going to negotiate XYZ project, and we'll figure out how to do it, either city manager only, or council member, or maybe a subcommittee, and we're not going to say anything to the public until we're done. Do you think the public in Brisbane would be okay with that? I don't. I don't. I think they'd be livid. What are you negotiating for on my behalf? What is it you're negotiating? The same question I could ask, what if one person decided they're going to go negotiate? Didn't ask the public, but they're negotiating on behalf of Brisbane? Do you think that's any, I think both are problematic. And I think, I, I appreciate all the work that went into this and bringing up precedents, because I think it's really good material to get all of us thinking. There's a lot of things coming that are going to be public decisions. They're not all developments. There's other things. But when do we involve the public? We've had, I know people have said to me, oh, you got these closed session meetings. Well, with high-speed real, when you're in litigation, you can't really put a lot of that publicly. You just can't. And Tom, you could address that. But at any rate, I think when we get to other things, we owe it to the public to have public input. How we design that, I don't even think we should design it. I think we get the public in a public meeting and say, what are your expectations? How do you want us to approach this? There's a lot of different ideas, maybe some of the ideas we haven't even heard yet. We have different groups that have, have advocacy for different things. And, and maybe those become part of the regular, the, the pot at the end of discussions that we say, this is what we're negotiating for. But shouldn't we make that decision as a community? Not just a council, five people. I don't want to assume I know what everybody in Brisbane wants. Is it, is it based on just people I talk to? I don't think that's okay.
Well, I think there's a distinction here, Colleen, between having a meeting and negotiating.
Oh, absolutely.
And so to me, I still think anyone can be negotiating anything. There's no, you're not, I mean, anyone who's gonna engage in negotiations with one council member, that's like, I think it, um, destroys their credibility as, as an applicant. You, you come and you negotiate with a full body. You don't work outside deals with anybody. I, and I don't think that that, it sounds like everyone has an appetite for transparency here, which is great. And I don't think that that's gonna be a problem, provided that we're all committing, hey, we're gonna have transparency. I think it's when you take a meeting, people can jump to the conclusion that you're negotiating. Um, and so that's why if you're having a meeting, it's important to have staff there. And I think it's important for the rest of the council, if you can help it to know in advance that you're going to have a meeting. Um, for example, Health Peak approached me while I was the mayor. They requested a meeting. I came to the full council and I said, they'd like to have a meeting. Clay will be there. Are you all okay with that? The council gave the blessing for me to have the meeting and Terry or whoever is mayor in years going forward, because they're in the position of being the mayor, they are going to get requests for a meeting. So Clay and I went, we met with them. They wanted to talk about water. Because they know about B D I, how B D I was trying to secure water for their project, um, on the Baylands and therefore maybe the hotel site. And they tried to talk to B D I about the process of finding water because they wanna do, you know, a project thems, H C or Health Peak wants to do a project themselves. And they were like, this, we've never run into this. Like, how does this work? And so for the most part, it was just Clay having a conversation about what's happening with water negotiations and where that's going. And then when I came back under Mayor Council Matters, I reported that up. So I think it's good for the rest of the council, if you can help it to, especially the mayor, to say, I've been approached to have this meeting. How do you all feel about me having this meeting? This is the staff that's gonna be with us, be with me. And then when you have the meeting, you report out what happened. And I think it should be really, you know, for informational purposes only versus, you know, trying to talk about, let's hear your perspective on the Baylands project. We wanna know what you like, what you don't like. If it's something that's just for the purpose of, hey, I need, we have something that we need to discuss. We need more information from the city about this. To me, those are meetings that make sense. Because then when you start talking about, well, this is on my list wish lists, or these are the community benefits I like to see. That can veer into what I think can be considered negotiating.
And thank you for that. In the same realm that we all sit on various subcommittees, city subcommittees, but also county subcommittees where we're dealing with other entities. And what we say is really important. And that's why we have those reports at council meetings.
Right.
Because oftentimes what will happen is someone may say, just like you said, what's going on with the Baylands? And sometimes maybe they wanna talk to you, like, like you're talking about, about water or something. It's a question. And you, you can say, you know what? I'll take this information. We'll get back to you. Period.
Yeah.
And, and it's information. It can be brought to a council meeting. It can go to the city manager. It could go to the city attorney. And, and that's gonna happen. That needs to happen. But I'm, I'm more concerned when we talk about in here about negotiations that we really need to have a very serious discussion about expectations. And I would ask that we schedule a council meeting with a public hearing and invite people to come give us input on what their expectations are. As an example, we had Parkside. That was a process. That was a small portion of Brisbane. Some of these development projects are way bigger. Shouldn't we give it the same deference we gave Parkside? Just to use that as an example.
I, I think, I think that, you know, your points are really, I know Karen wants to input something here and I'm gonna interrupt the circle and go over to Karen for a minute.
So relative to this entire conversation, um, in the last week, someone who was either on one of our committees or commissions approached me and was very upset that something had happened in their group that they thought might be a violation of the Brown Act. And they gave me the information. I will give that to Tom at some point. And I said, that doesn't sound so great. But let me get to our legal counsel and ask that question. Not just respond with my knee jerk reaction was, yeah, I think that sucks, but, um, and I did. And so where we ended up in that little conversation was the request that we, the city council, have a meeting with all of the committees and commissioners. Call it a retreat, whatever you wanna call it, because there is some major confusion about just general day to day protocol on our committees and commissions, which goes straight into if we're confused, they're confused. And if they're confused, our entire community is gonna be confused.
Well, I don't think we're confused.
Well, and, and what I, what I think when, when with Dana's letter, I think if we were directing this workshop to a particular project, like we're, we wanna talk about negotiations on the Baylands.
Yeah.
That is not what we're talking about. We're talking about a broader, general view. So her, her letter brought up, you know, some reasonable things, what happened to these requests that, you know, have been made in the past by citizens or her, um, or have been brought up. And, you know, they're all very legitimate requests that should go into the Baylands pile.
Mm hmm.
Um, and once we've, we've done that general feel of the community, you know, granted, maybe 10 years ago, seven years ago, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago. You know, we've done it all over and over and over again, where they've presented the, the, the developers at the Baylands have pre, pre, presented their vision. And they've asked for community input. Um, and those were workshops sponsored by the developer. We took that information, we, they put some of it into their plan. They still haven't come back really with anything they've brought to the council to see how any of those visions from the community have been inputted. And they haven't come back to the council with how any of those visions can financially be feasible. Cause those are something that a development agreement that is gonna be a negotiation need to work out all those details of how something is feasible, logistical, how it fits into the pie. And what community benefits we will be able to get that are within reason. Um, some of them are written in stone on what we have to get. You know, there's things that by state law that have to come out of a development. And there's things that are, are what the developer is gonna offer. And then there's fluff that maybe we can get and maybe we can't get. Depends on how financially viable their project's gonna be. So I think that Dana's letter was very interesting, but it was focused on a specific development that that's not what this meeting's about. This is on, on negotiation and um, the appearance of backroom deals and things, you know, not about a specific development that's going on in a backroom deal that's happening today or next week or next year or 10 years from now. Um, so, I mean, anyway, that's sort of my opinion of that letter. And I mean, it did bring up a lot of points on one specific project, but we're not talking about that project. You had something more you wanted to add?
Yes. Uh, so is there a commitment to, to folks at the table that if you take a meeting, not bumping into somebody in, in a conference? But if you take a meeting with a developer, um, that this is something that we could put a line item on the agenda to say, this is, I met with X and Y. Would that be agreeable?
It wouldn't be a line item on the agenda. It'd be in council matters.
Yeah, a council matter. So would that be agreeable?
Uh, well, we've all said it would be agreeable to us. We can't legally enforce that.
Understood, understood. But what I'm saying, and I'll just say the elephant in this room, that's in the room. Because of the tensions on this council, because of the specific tensions on this council, there's a distrust that trickles down. And so people really need the, the breath of fresh air to know what's going on. So for everyone to step forward and say, this is what I did. This is where I went. Clean air all around so that there's no misunderstanding. Do you understand? And I don't mean to stir up anything. I don't mean to reopen old wounds or anything like that. But these exist still.
Yeah. I mean, I said, I think that should be, I think that that should be something that's discussed before a meeting is even taken.
Right, yes.
So, I mean, I think that out of respect for the full council, if it's somebody with an application before us.
Right.
I think that if, if, for the sake of transparency and for building trust, whether you need to do it, whether you're required to do it,
Mm hmm.
to say, I'm going to do it, even though it may not be required of me, I'm going to share this information. Um, whether you're open to the input of the other four.
Yes.
To say, I'd like to know that I have your blessing to take this meeting is one thing. I think at least having the courtesy to say, I've been approached to have a meeting. Have any of you been approached to have a meeting? I'm planning to take a meeting to have a conversation about it. This is what, you know, we're planning to discuss. This is the staff that's going to be there. And then, you know, having a conversation and then having a report back, I think it could be, I think you could take it one step further. Um, I don't know if that's that everyone's appetite, but I think that it goes a long way in building trust. You know, trust is so precious. And once trust is broken, it's very hard to rebuild. And I think these are small steps that we can do to all build that trust with each other. Whether it's, you know, um, whether we have to by law do that, I think it shows respect for others.
Exactly. Shakespeare said, season for it must be above even reproach. The idea of exceeding the standard, that it's not just whether it's legal or not, but we are going to be transparent with our good citizens.
Well, that's what I think most of us are all the time. So.
But what we're not.
I do have a, a comment. There is something that, that has gone on in my mind for a long time relative to if we, any of us, you know, on any committee, commission, city council has approached, if somebody has an idea. And you might think, that is a really great idea. I think the good response, the great responses, I personally think that's a great idea. Let me run it by the council and see what they think, instead of saying yes to make someone happy. I wanna be the good aunt or the good uncle. Yes, I can do that. Yes, we can do that. Yes. When in fact, many of these things we cannot do.
I would even say, Karen, instead of let me run it by the rest of the council, I would say, come to a meeting and say it at public comment.
Can you do?
Approach the city manager. See if you can get it agendas or the mayor, see if you can get it agendas. Um, write to us. Because then that puts, that takes the pressure of, I'm going to share your idea with everybody else. And just, it allows them, I, I think it helps guide them. Here's the public process. We have a process. We really have a process for everything. So if somebody, and most, a lot of people don't know what the process is. They don't even know that you can come and talk at oral communications when meetings are. They just know that they have a problem or they have an idea and they're trying to, you know, um, find solutions. So I think.
Go on, on that, you know, on bringing in public engagement. You know, I think that we've had ish times where um, a council member will give form letters to people to modify and send out in, on behalf of something they're advocating for. I think that is also a gray area.
Yeah, I don't like.
Again, it's not illegal, but it's a gray area. And.
It's a bad look.
And we, and we hear who has done it.
No.
Because the people who send the letters tell us.
The other thing is I just wanna make a point before we go on. When you talk about the different ways that the public can contact us. I've heard sometimes people complain that, oh, we got a letter and Ingrid didn't read it. We read all the letters that come in. We read on the council. We read all those letters.
Yeah.
They're not just, oh, there's a letter or another letter. I, I read every single letter.
Provided it's sent in.
Early enough. Sometimes it's difficult when it's thirty minutes before a meeting and.
Or during a meeting.
Or during a meeting, we're not gonna see it. So, you know, maybe three hours before the meeting is, is helpful. Cause that's about it.
So Jason, if you could push away from the table, you're sort of blocking the rest of the Zoom camera sitting there.
So i- if I may, so, uh, uh, you know, I, I appreciate Dana's letter and I appreciate your comments about negotiations. And join applying it to a project, yes, for sure. Um, this is more broad, right? This is, you know, what's gonna be the council's protocol? What do we feel comfortable with? And how we, you know, engage developers, applicants, and also, you know, constituents too. So going back to the, the first one, right, since it was raised by Jason. You know, I look at this, there's, there's a couple of things here. And, you know, I just, you know, trying to give staff direction so that hopefully, you know, at a future council meeting, we can have something that we can adopt. And so, you know, the one where, uh, members.
Your own meetings.
On meetings, yeah, right. So number two, right? I'm sorry about that. Uh, number two, yeah. So, um, in regards to, uh, city staff should also attend. It sounds like we're all in agreement with that.
Definitely.
And then, um, you know, about placing something, uh, on it, you know, having an agenda item under Mayor and Council Matters addressing, you know, some of these things that we just talked about. Seems like we're all in agreement with that.
Again, I think that we can say that we have agreed to these things. I'm not sure legally and, and maybe, um, Tom can correct me or, or give an approval. Um, we're not really going to be able to enforce this legally. This is going to be a code of conduct type of issue.
Yes.
It's not gonna be legally enforceable.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, if it turns out that people are doing it or not doing it or being sloppy in doing it, um, there's not gonna be really a recourse to that. Um, you know, and, you know, so, so it is just a, you know, I pledge allegiance kind of thing. Um, and so I, I'm not sure, other than doing a code of conduct, you know, where well, I think it's not enforceable. I'm not sure really. I mean, we've all. Most of us sat at this table and said we would do these things.
You know what I, you know, I, I, I agree with you, Terry. You know, that, um, right, it is a code of conduct. There will be though, meetings with staff. And I think like all those meetings that, you know, where staff is involved, those should be on there and staff should make a point of putting it on the agenda so that it is, you know.
When we can, when it's.
Right. And that makes sense, right? Of course, if it's a, you know, kind of a sensitive matter, like a closed session, obviously that doesn't get, uh, you know, put out into the public realm. But other times when it's appropriate, that makes sense. And so, um.
I think if it's a closed session item.
We do the.
It should be.
The report out.
It should be two council members, I think. Because like you had a meeting with High Speed Rail, you were there. Who else was the other person? Well, okay, Clay was there. So I think that, um, if it's something that's like, that's that sensitive, where it's closed session and we're meeting with somebody that's closed session, it should probably be mayor, mayor pro tem, or we can discuss it in the closed session, but I think it, if something is, you know, to the level that it's closed session, it probably should be more than just one council member.
See, right, I agree, right? And that, that's something that isn't in the staff report here, but you know, I, you know, I think, you know, you did a great job, you know, coordinating that meeting, though. I, I mean, I'll just, just putting it out there. I mean, I didn't know that you were gonna have that meeting until later.
Everybody did.
Eventually, well, I know, I, I, okay, well.
You forgot.
I, I forgot, right? So, um, but I think, like, to your point, I think having two council members and, and, you know, something that's higher stakes, it makes sense. Just like when you and I went to the, um, M T C meeting, right, to deal with the Plan Twenty Fifty. Right? So.
Keep your discretion, but I think that we should just, if we're more open and transparent we are about any meetings, the better we as a group of five can determine what's the best course of action as a group. So.
It's not even just course of action. It's that sometimes there's a great genesis of a great idea. And when you put it out for everyone else, it grows into something even better, but you negate that if you don't have the discussion.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, yeah. It really helps. That's why we give those committee reports at council meetings. Because it, it's not about what, what you do at A B A G. It's about, well, what, how does this affect the whole city? How does this affect the council? How does this affect their? How does this affect their decisions? And without saying that, we don't know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
You know, a lot of times staff does a really wonderful job of filtering what information comes from other agencies and what information comes from closed session. And going forward, a certain amount of what's going to come from discussions between planning and staff, you know, and and the city manager, what comes to us and how it gets filtered to us. Um, and we have to take that with a grain of truth and a grain of salt, both at the same time, to apply our own thought process to how things are being presented. And and right now, you know, with some things, the city manager or the current city manager, Clay, has a broader brush that he can deal with on his own. Because we have a trust in him. He he knows the ropes, he knows the feeling of our community. Then perhaps where we're going to be coming in with a new city manager. That initial trust limit, so to speak, may not be as high. But we'll have to see that once, once we cross that bridge. You know, so some of the things, there were negotiations that, you know, just like different department heads have a certain limit that they can spend without coming to us to ask permission. They can spend it because we trust them. And so, you know, going forward, there's a certain amount of trust that we have to put in our staff. And we have to put into our city manager about where the initial take of negotiations are going to take place. And, you know, that'll be on these big projects where there will be more wiggle room for them to start where we're going to be. And it's going to be up for up to us and the community where it really comes down to. But, you know, we we have to have that.
So so further to what you're just saying then. Clay, when we have a new city manager, I mean, we just go, oh, yeah. Clay is the repository of all this great information for so long. This person is going to be sitting in your chair. And we're going to be the repositories of information to feed them. How are we going to do that?
Well, I think that's going to be a whole nother work.
Conversation for another.
You know, we're going to have to rely on 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 the training that Clay has given to the rest of the staff and and the wealth and knowledge that's there. Because, I mean, if it's something about the sewer system or some water, it's going to be Randy. If it's something about planning and and what the rules are, it's it's going to be John. You know, so there's going to be, he he, what he's passed out is where that repository is really going to be on the knitting. I can say, well, I think we had a problem with sewer and water back in two thousand thirteen. And I think this is what we did. But really, you're going to trust this noggin? Maybe, maybe Clark, but.
We'll call Clark.
We'll call Clark.
He won't be too far away.
Oh, I'll be around. God willing.
We have.
So I have a question concerning kind of a tangent to meetings. And that is fundraising and taking donations from the developers. So I'll give you an example. Karen, just hypothetically, your mother, let's say your grandchildren, even though they're not in the area, are at Silver Spot and you're on the board and you're running a fundraiser. And you, and I'm not saying you ever did this, but you reach out to the Baylands for a thousand dollars. And then you reach out to Orchard Park and then you reach out to another developer. And instead of getting normal two hundred dollars per person, Baylands gives you a thousand and Health Peak gives you fifteen hundred and another one gives you whatever. And you're, you have dual roles. You're a board member and you're a council member. My question is, how do you feel about that? As city council members who do have these projects in front of you? And as Clay said, most of these projects are fully baked. That there is confusion that sometimes comes. That you as a group will make these decisions together. So that hypothetical situation has played out. And Madison and I have had a number of communications about her role as the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce President, wearing a hat that is a nonprofit, that has solicited, has emailed and has received multi-tier donations from the top developers that this city is negotiating with. And I would like clarity from all of you on if that is something that we should be doing or be talking more about, or at least having it on your agenda that that has happened. Because I believe, I just have a half a minute more. I believe that you have a strong conviction that you have a hat, a gold time paid hat on, and that you are acting in good faith. And I believe you you are. But there's blurred lines here. When you send a letter to the Baylands, they're not thinking of you as the Chamber of Commerce President. I'm sorry, they aren't. They're thinking of you as a council member. And that's where it's blurred. And I feel very strongly that ethically, that is not what a council member should be doing regardless of their current role in that position. It would be the same situation, Terry, that let's say at the Sierra Yacht Club, that one of the developer comes in and notices, let's say, the roof is leaking. So I can give you a couple thousand dollars. You know, it it's easy to say, oh, great. And, you know, I'm not saying that you ever would do that, but it's blurred. And I feel very strongly that it's something that we should address.
Um, Nancy, I don't, that's not really what we're contemplating here. But I think that it would be, I mean, I think that it would be good for Tom to weigh in on whether.
Sure.
The ethics of that, because I think that this is, you're calling into question something on a basis of ethics.
Yes.
And I think it's important for the city attorney to speak to those ethics. So Tom, do you want to weigh in on?
All I I can speak to the law. I'm wondering if I can even comment on one, but well, I I think I can. The, before uh, Councilmember Davis took that position, uh, she consulted legal advice for the city and I believe externally to make sure that it wouldn't create a legal conflict of interest. And she has abided by the rules. There are very definite rules that have to be followed, but she's abided by those. Uh, I've had, I get a lot of uh, letters and comments and nobody has raised this uh, an accusation that she hasn't. I know early on, in open comment, uh, some people said, well, you're doing this and you're doing this, isn't that a problem? But that was a couple of years ago. I haven't heard anything since. So uh, she's abiding by the law to my knowledge. That is different. That's a legal standard. It's a legal requirement. Um, ethics are personal. And as much as we want to uh, get into what we don't like and what we'd like to see others do, people don't live by the same rules from person to person. And the reason we have the law is to guide it uh, when a community feels that they want to be guided by that law, constrained by it. A lot of communities don't want a contribution limit. A lot of communities don't want a law that says a council member shall not meet with X, Y, Z because they gave two hundred and fifty dollars to some other charity, not even them directly. That has not happened in Brisbane and I, I'd have to refresh, but I don't think it's happened in the county. But I do, I would have to research that. So legally, there's not an issue that I'm aware of. Um, there could have been, but Councilmember Davis has recused. And whenever she's come to to legal and said, there's an event, I'm doing this, do I need to disclose it? Looked at it and I think probably nine out of ten times we've said disclose it and she's disclosed it from the dais. So uh, that's very distinct from how somebody is personally comfortable or not. Uh, that, having done this a long time, people are very, well, very well intentioned, come to very different conclusions on how people should comport themselves in public office. And it's not because one is bad and one is good or one is insensitive and one isn't. It's because we all have very different views of how we carry ourselves and we can't legislate all of that.
Thank you, Tom. I I do have one comment. And, you know, while Madison has done fundraising through the chamber for different events, they're usually for another nonprofit like the Lions Club or and the Chamber of Events. But, you know, there's been other, other people that have gotten contributions for the Running Club. Um, so, you know, when someone has more than one hat that they wear, they need to differentiate on that hat. And when, you know, the city sponsors an event that is a community event at the Yacht Club for SBYC, I recuse myself from that.
I think that's admirable.
And as does Madison, when it's something uh, for the chamber and and has Mr. Lance for when it's the Running Club. So because she's had two events that were sponsored by a developer, would not mean that she's beholden to that developer. As, I mean, Cliff has gotten the same kind of sponsorship.
Through his rent. Not the same kind, it's different, right? So I just just be clear. Right?
I mean, it's still a donor. I I'm not.
Are we not getting to a mudslay match here?
We're not even.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, right? You're you're saying that, you know, I just wanted to be clear that, yes, I I have taken uh, some donations from uh, some of the uh, entities, some of the developers in in our city. But I made sure that they all paid the same amount. One wasn't more than the other and and just, you know, just for for full transparency, I just stopped doing that because of the uh, developments that were coming before us. So I didn't pass, but I I don't, I haven't done it in.
I think, I think when I had communication, Councilmember Davis, I was very clear that and maybe I wasn't clear, but I I want to come to that conclusion, that you're using your name. Let's say, and I didn't even ask you about the Brisbane Lions, you actually volunteered that.
Sure.
That you, I don't even know if you are a Brisbane Lion, but you're using your name instead of other people using their names led to an increase in donations. And it wasn't because of your being a Brisbane Chamber person or a previous uh, participant on the scholarship program. It's that you are a council member. Ninety-nine percent of the people, when they hear your name, they say, oh, she's on the council. It's not about the chamber, it's on the council. It's the same situation, and I'll say to the city attorney, in which she was asked to take the fifty part place off your posters. That's not your, that is your place of business, but is known to be City Hall. So when people think of you, they give more. That's very admirable.
That's an assumption you're making that you don't have proof of. You're you're assuming that the Baylands is sponsoring or Health Peak or whoever is sponsoring and giving a certain amount simply because I'm associated with the city of Brisbane. And unless they're here to say why they give, I think that that's hearsay and that's unfair. Okay, and that's also not what we're discussing. We're talking about negotiating and how we're conducting ourselves with meetings. I, secondly, I do have to wear two hats and in this meeting I am a councilperson. So I'm not going to talk about wha- what decisions I'm going to do as a chamber CEO, because I would be having to switch a hat in the same meeting, which I cannot do. So if you would like to talk to me or anyone would like to talk to me separately as CEO of the chamber, you can also reach out to my board.
Right.
You can communicate, anyone can communicate with my board. And any decisions about how I conduct myself with the chamber are decisions that are made amongst my board. I cannot sit here and tell you that I'm going to do something as chamber CEO because that would be breaching the the um, standards that I hold myself to. Just like when we were communicating, we were talking through my chamber email and I was talking about my chamber role. I will not talk about my chamber role at a city council meeting. That completely crosses the line and just destroys my credibility. So I will not do that here. If anyone else wants to weigh in on whether they think that that's okay or not, that's fine. But in this moment, I'm not going to address that. I'm not going to commit to anything because that's, that that doesn't align with the choices that I've made and the conduct that I have promised the rest of the council that I will will uphold.
Mayor, I I think we're getting.
I I do something to say, and and it was something I was going to say before Nancy talked. Um, and it is kind of on this subject. And it's about influence, okay? And everybody has different levels of influence. And everyone uses that influence or that influence uses you. And growing up here, I have influence. My last name is Salmon. It carries a lot more weight than Davis, sorry. I mean, it's a longer history. And, you know, people have a different influence for different things. And you have influence, you have, you all have influence in different ways. Kevin, you have influence, you got a ton of money from the Baylands for your program, you know? And and Nancy, you have influence. You you know, you you had so much influence, you became, you know, volunteer of the year. And you have influence with Sam Trent. And so everyone has different kinds of influence. And this is one of the things what this whole subject is about is how are you using your influence? We're discussing meetings and everything, but one of the things that's caused a problem is people using their influence or or people trying to influence um, your decisions. And I know because I've been approached and I've had two meals with the people from Orchard Partners, just me. And they reached out to me, they wanted to meet me, they wanted to talk to me, they felt I had influence. And and I do, I'm on Open Space and Ecology. I'm on the Board of San Bruno Mountain Watch and my last name is Salmon, okay? But I made it very clear to them that I was there as Salmon, not as OCEP and not as a representative from San Bruno Mountain Watch. And I also made it very clear to San Bruno Mountain Watch, my board, that I was attending a meeting to hear what they had to say. And we did not discuss any specifics. I asked for specifics, I asked to see their plans, you know? Um, and they 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 were just all nice, nice, wanted to have my influence. And this happens all the time. And Colleen, you're naive if you think that all the people in Brisbane should help make a decision because all the people in Brisbane don't bother to get informed on the issues. I've been accused of knowing things that happened in closed session. And I've been accused of violating the Brown Act. I've known what the Brown Act was since I was seven years old, all right? I pay attention, I read the agendas, I read the minutes, I see what's happening. I know what the parcel numbers are, you know? And I'm sorry, I've been blessed with a really good memory of things that happened. And so, you know, sometimes this whole decision, I mean, Cliff, you got in hot water over um, you're you're a dreamer, you know, and you have ideas and you express those ideas. And then people think, oh, Cliff's on our side and he's going to do this for us. And the next thing you know, you're being accused of having stepped over the line to promise something that you don't have the right to promise or the ability to to promise. Um, and that was a situation that happened with Mountain Watch and and the Baylands and and the property over uh, when the.
I I didn't make a promise.
No, you didn't make a promise. But it was taken that way because you were a person of influence. And I had to say no to to the board that I was working with, saying, no, he's not promising that, he can't promise you that. That's an idea, okay? And this is where misinterpretation happens. And it happens, every one of us in this room, every single one of us in this room knows that and has experienced that. And now, and and this is what we're really dealing with. And this is why it's so important to be honest and transparent, not to be a rumor monger, not to deny what's happening, you know? But this is where it really is, this is where the. It is a small. And it's important that we all have integrity, that we all are transparent in what we do and what we say, because our future, we are very small, but we are very powerful if we stick together. But when I see this kind of divisiveness, that takes away from the greater good of. that takes away from the greater good of Brisbane, Madison has raised close to a hundred thousand dollars for scholarships for, for students in Brisbane. She has influence. I've raised thousands and thousands of dollars and lots of support for San Bruno Mountain to save this mountain. Kevin had used his influence to help us get a new library. Okay. Give you yours influence to help feed hungry people in this town. Every single one of us. So let's just be straightforward and honest and open about it going forward. Try to educate everybody honestly and as best as possible. That's what I'm at with this.
Thank you, Michelle.
And Madison, thank you for using your influence to provide over a hundred thousand dollars in scholarships for people in Brisbane. Can you apply some victim out? Which she does, by the way.
Okay. So I think you, we're continuing down your list.
I'm not the mayor, so I mean, I.
Where we left off.
Yes, we went way far afield.
I didn't mean to.
I think you had a couple of questions. I don't know where we can go on this.
You know, I'm, I'm good with what's said here about the time you have meetings. Oh, I guess, you know, there's, okay, so I guess, I guess we should talk about this one. You know, and which one? Number four? I don't have any questions, but I'd like for us to discuss. So.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I think we should discuss.
Okay, let's go into discussion then. Go ahead.
All right. So. This is, this is tough, right? It's tough because, you know, you want to talk in general terms and you don't want to say, you know, you know, point them out. You know, have we? You know, we had an application before us that was sensitive. And all of us were asked by the applicant to meet with them. And when councilmember did. So.
I, I was, had not enough to meet with anybody.
This, this, this was an application that was before us.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Tom, is it okay if we go into the specifics of this meeting that was taken? And, and name it. Is that okay? Because I think we need to air it. I think it's good to air. But is it okay, Tom?
Can we, can we take a five minute break and can I talk to the mayor and the city manager?
Sure. How, how do you want to do that?
You would just adjourn for five minutes and go to Clay's office and just call.
Sounds good. Thank you. We're gonna take a five minute adjournment.
Okay.
I never got a.
Maybe they're out there. Oh, there we go.
Jason's not here. So are we ready to come back in? Did you tell the meeting? Okay, I'm going to reconvene the meeting and I did, we did. Yes.
I should probably speak first so that we're clear. I didn't explain why I wanted that adjournment for that break. For the folks in the room or listening, I just didn't know what was being referenced when Mayor O'Connell mentioned closed session. So I just wanted to understand what was being referenced. And I now understand what, what she was referencing.
Okay. So I wanted to say that the topic we're going to discuss was not a closed session topic. It was a topic that was discussed in an open meeting. We went ahead and extended the meeting. And we were going to come back and broach the subject later. And at that point, it never got re-agendized because it was removed from the, the request was removed by the applicant. And I, because there's only one person in the room that was there at the time, I'm going to give the floor to Madison to start with what her impression of a meeting was.
Thank you. I feel like this is something you've been trying to hold over my head for a while. And so I think we just need to air it out. And it's something that I've heard, you know, it's really something that's been between us five, but I, I'm hearing it in the community twisted in all different sorts of ways. And, you know, where that information is coming from, I have my suspicions, but I think that it's important to talk about it. Since I am the one who had the meeting and I know what happened at the meeting. So here's the story. Bristol Meyer Squibb approached the city wanting to do animal testing. We had a public hearing. It was very obvious where most of us stood on the issue, right? Nobody likes the thought of animal testing. Cliff had a ton of questions. I had a ton of questions. Basically Karen said, over my dead body, I'm a vegan. I'll never vote for this. I don't care how good it is. I will never vote for this. And Colleen said something similar. And I, I, you know, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong because I'm summarizing, you know, how you, what you guys said in the meeting. But I was very torn because according to our ordinance, what they were asking for, we should allow. And so, but the thought of having animal testing was really, it was really weighing heavy on me. And, and I think that the same was happening for Cliff too. We were all, you know, mulling it over and talking about it. And so Bristol Meyer Squibb reached out to every council member after that public hearing because they could see that it wasn't looking good. And they offered me the opportunity to meet with them so they could answer any questions I might have. And I took the meeting. And I learned a lot about having that meeting. And I won't approach meetings like that ever again in the future because of how this meeting went. My big mistake was that I didn't have staff there. We've all discussed this meeting at length many times in this room. Sometimes when we had our council rotation. And most recently, you know, we talked about having meetings and not having staff there. I made a mistake. I should have had staff there, but I never really had a meeting like this before. And so I learned some lessons from that. But basically I met down with Bristol, met with Bristol Meyer Squibb and I asked him a ton of questions because I know nothing about animal testing. I found out that there are actually different layers to animal testing. It's been a while, but it's like a one labeled one, two or three. How painful is it for the animal? One is like basically just observing. Two is a little bit, you know, ramped up. Like you're getting sedated and you're getting injected and all these sort of things. And three is like no anesthesia, no, you know, pain medication, no anything. And so they were explaining to me that at their site, they were going to be doing, conducting like animal two level animal testing. And I'm butchering like the levels because it's been a long time since I had this conversation with them. And they said, you know, we're really like not getting the sense that it's going well based on how your colleagues have responded at the meeting and none of us, none of them will have a meeting with us. None of them will call us back or anything. And and so they're like, we're really worried because this, it's our first time in Brisbane. We just opened our campus. Want to have a great relationship with the council. And we're just really concerned because we want like the community to embrace us. And like clearly there was a lot of public comment from people not wanting animal testing. And I said, yeah, I mean, this is a very environmentally focused town and I think that you're gonna, I mean, clearly you're raising concerns. And I said, and you know, it's also an election year. And I said, and issues become really big in election years. It happened to be my election. But I want to make clear that I would never stray away from voting on anything. And I think that this is what's been being implied several times is that somehow because I was in an election, I didn't want to vote on this topic. And I'd like to set the record straight that I will vote on anything at any time. I am not, I am, I am not gonna sit here and, you know, wilt like a flower because I don't want to vote on something. I have a backbone. I have opinions. I study all my packets. I'm well informed. I am equipped to vote on anything at any time that it is called with this council. I am not ashamed of any votes that I make and I will stand by any vote that I make. So I said, these issues become really, really big. And they, they get all over Facebook. That's how Brisbane works, right? And so people will be mentioning your name. People will be talking about it. And I said, I, you know, yeah, I think what you're perceiving, I think you're, I think you're spot on, you know? And so we ended the meeting. They thanked me for my time. I learned a lot about animal testing and they called me a few weeks later and they said, we just want to let you know that we decided to pull our application. And I was like, why? And they said, well, we waited to see if other council members would meet with us. We even sent follow-up emails. No one has responded. And we took that as like, this council really is not going to play ball with us. And we don't want to put it to a vote because we don't want to risk that this council will be forced to vote no. And we want to have a great relationship with this council, but we feel like if we start off our relationship with them and they all, and this doesn't pass, that going forward, there's going to be a tense relationship between us and them. So we've decided to withdraw. And I said, okay, yeah, no problem. They have never brought this back. There is an inference that I, you know, maybe said, bring it back a little bit later, like, and because I didn't want to vote on it during my election. If that was the case, they would have brought it back when I was mayor. They have not brought it back. They have no intention of bringing it back. There was the accusation that somehow I meddled in this process and like convinced them not to move forward with the project. So I reached out to Tom, I reached out to Clay and I said, listen, they told me exactly why they pulled their project and it makes sense to me. And I think that we should ask them to make a statement as to why they withdrew it so that there's no hearsay as to why they withdrew it. And Tom advised that you never ask an applicant why they pull a project. You just leave it alone. So that is what happened with Bristol Meyer Squibb. And they eventually had a ribbon cutting last year. It was a big deal. And they invited all of us. And when I was there, they said, you know, we're so happy that we have this relationship with this council that you guys are all supportive. We've had several ribbon cuttings in other cities. And they've been a mess. The mayor came, wasn't prepared, didn't say really kind things. And this has been one of the best ribbon cuttings we've ever had. And they have campuses all over the world. And so they kind of just reiterated that they're really happy with the way that the relationship is between us and them, even though there's no animal testing. So if anyone has any questions about that meeting, I'm happy to answer it. Unfortunately, they're not here. Unfortunately, we can't get them to put into writing why they pulled their application. But those are the facts.
All right. So first of all, I just want to say I appreciate you explaining what had happened. When you and I spoke about it, when it did occur, I had mentioned to you, okay, I think you should talk with the full council about this. This is something I think would be good for you to just get it out there, we deal with it and we move on. So I know you might think that I'm keeping this over your head. We deal with it and we move on. So I know you might think that I'm keeping this over your head. I'm not, but it did, you know, affect me, right? You know, you had every right to go visit them and speak your mind, you know, so. But I felt that the full council should have known, right? And that if there was any discussion, we should have it, right? That's how we should do it. And appreciate you saying that, yeah, I won't do that again. Because I think that's something that we, if we're going to make some guidelines, right? We should agree to that.
I learned my lesson on that one. I learned that you never have a meeting without staff present. Because anyone can say anything happened in that meeting and no one's there to to set the record straight. So listen, I learned my lesson. Could I go, if I could go back in time and make a different choice, I absolutely would. But I think that having the meeting was so valuable for me because it made things so clear. And it actually gave me, it gave me a direction about how I was planning to vote on that issue that I was very cloudy before. And I think that really is our job as council members. We have to go and do that research. Sometimes it's outside of a meeting. You go, you seek the information, you are as fully informed as possible, so you can make the best decision that you can. But I did have, I did let every council member know individually. I called you all. I said, hey, I had this meeting. This is how it went. This is what we talked about. They have emailed you. You haven't responded. Here is the name of the person who emailed. Here is the subject line. If you're interested. I didn't feel like they were trying to lobby me. I really felt like they were just trying to give me information. It wasn't a scary meeting. Should we have had a discussion about it in an open session like this? Maybe. Going forward, that's the commitment that I'm making. And I think that's a commitment that we're all making. I'm happy that it happened on something like that versus, you know, something that's of a grander scale. But I I am, I'm ready to move forward on this. And I feel like this just keeps getting brought up a lot in a lot of different ways, or like, is it innuendo? Or I'm seeing it spun other ways on Facebook. And I think that it's really important for us to clearly talk about it. And I think like, we need to, we need to move forward. We need to talk about what are, what are our commitments as a body going forward? How are we going to conduct ourselves? Many of us have made mistakes in the past and maybe spoke to the press and the press took our words out of context. And all of a sudden, there's a big blowout from that. We've all done different things that we can look back on and say, maybe I shouldn't have approached it that way. But we're talking about now. And it sounds like we have a great framework for how we're going to move forward with respect, with transparency to build trust. And I, like I said, have no problem with any of these things. And I would, you know, I'm even suggesting doing things beyond this. So that's my truth.
So, you know, on, on respect to that, I mean, I was ready to vote without adjourning the meeting to get more information because I had enough information, in my opinion, to make a decision on animal testing. And I think there's others in the room that didn't. Madison and Cliff both had questions because they wanted to be fair to the applicant and not bring some of the preconceived ideas that we may have about animal testing or the way the balance of the human benefit of some of the animal testing. But I think that, you know, I would have been ready to make a vote right then. And I think there, there was at least two other people that were ready to vote right then. And we did give the benefit of the doubt. But if I'd been the person in the audience who was the applicant, I would have read that room like they read it. And then they talked with someone who maybe was on the fence at the beginning, or at least was still open to further discussion. And, you know, as Clark used to say, we can count the three.
Yeah, you know, whether or not, you know, like the Madison meeting with them had any influence, probably not, right? But I think where I have issue is that as a council, we didn't, we weren't able to finalize the closure, right? And not, and not just, you know, and the thing is that we will never know. Right?
They hold their application.
The application.
But what did we do? We actually formed a subcommittee. And this council took action and said, we don't ever want to be in this position again. And so Colleen and Karen met and they created a list of policies and I struggled with those policies myself, but I, you know, I saw how passionate the rest of this council was on that. And in the end, I supported that. And so, you know, I think that while we didn't have a final vote on that particular thing, that did inspire us to look at our ordinance much deeper and say, wow, you know, there are a lot of loopholes here that maybe we don't want to exist. And so we have transformed how CR, how CR Point biotech will evolve over time. And that is a big.
I get that. And that's a separate thing. I'm focusing on this thing here and how we, you know, I, so that's where I want to keep the focus on, right? And so I would hope that we would agree.
You're calling that protocol.
Yeah, right.
A protocol item to bring.
Yeah, that we don't, you know, when, when they, when these applicants have projects before us and they reach out to us, that right, we go to that number two and say, okay, let's, let's go or go to council members with staff or something like that. Not, not the one on, you know, the one-on-one.
Well, you can see how it gets taken out of context. It gets blown out of proportion. And, you know, the rumor mill is pretty good at making things look pretty hairy, pretty spiky. If you want just a one liner from me from a scientific perspective, the FDA has always required every biotech company that is bringing a drug to market to do animal testing. That was the standard for the last 60 years. It's only been in the last couple of years that science has overtaken the efficacy of testing on an animal. You know, I mean, a cow doesn't have human tissue. So the results have always been a bit wonky anyway. So the artificial intelligence, I guess, if you want to call it, has overtaken any benefits that they ever had testing on animals. So therefore, that science is now the new normal. And the FDA has dropped that requirement. So for a lot of these big biotech companies, I don't know how Bristol Myers thinks, but for a lot of these big biotech companies, this is kind of a blood scent. They don't have to do horrible things to animals any longer because the science in front of them is much more efficacious. I wish I had the numbers to bring up. It's huge.
I'll add one thing to that. The FDA dropped the requirement because they were lobbied by the biotechs who didn't want to do animal testing any longer.
Because they had a better way to do it.
They had a better way to do it that's cheaper and more accurate. To get back to your point, though, I think that, I think that that's exactly in line with what I said earlier, like if it's a closed session item, have two people there. But I think that if it's, you know, something where you're trying to get more information and you want to meet one-on-one, provided that another council member, like, you know, they're like, oh, I don't want to meet with them. I don't want to go. So I think that you can give the rest of the council a choice. Like, I really need to have that meeting with them because I spoke with them at length in a way that I could not do in the confines of a meeting. Like, it was a very long conversation. And I asked so many questions and I had to really dive deep. Everyone would have been there bored out of their mind to hear me go, like, have that long with an applicant. And I think going forward, if there's a situation like that that arises, I'm happy to tell the council, I want to take this meeting and invite one other person to join me. And if nobody wants to join me, then I think I should still be able to have that meeting and staff can go. And I think staff should be there regardless. But I'm happy to do that. Like I said, I wish somebody was in that meeting. Because the, the assumptions about what happened in that meeting, you know, I've had to defend ever since. And so it's really, really, I'll never make that mistake again.
And I'll be good with that.
Well, that was a protocol question. So I have, I have another bomb to lob right in the middle of the table. So if we're going to agree to protocols, all of us, I am going to put on the table that nobody on this city council lobbies any of our committees or commission members to go to other committee members and commission members to fight for what they want. It's a council matter. So to me, this is where we've got a, a, a serious Brown Act potential violation series going on is that council member A has a different opinion in their mind than the rest of us. All of us. And so that council member goes to a committee or a commission member and says, hey, I believe X, but I don't think the rest of the council believes that at all. And I want you to send a letter to the rest of your committee or commission and lobby them with my idea and sends a letter out. So we've got, I don't know what you call that, Tom, but it's not a daisy chain. But it's basically, we are not allowed to do things like that when something may end up on an agenda in the future, when we know it is going to be on an agenda in the future. So I want, I want consent from all of you that that will never happen again because I got a big bomb dropped in my lap, which I'm going to have to talk to Tom about.
Well, I do think there's an important distinction here to make, right? It's, we're all free to talk to our constituents about anything. And our commissioners and committee members are also our constituents. I think that when we are talking to our constituents and then they are acting within their role as members of a commission or a committee and sending letters in and it's an organized effort, you know, and maybe that's been motivated by one council member. I think that anyone should be free to send us anything that they want, but I think that it can impact trust if it's coming from a council member and it's, you know, coordinated effort with commissions and committee members to then send something back to the full council and those people are using their, their positions on these committees and commissions. But I think any of our, I think any of our commissioners should be able to tell us whatever they think about anything, right? And they may on their own write us letters and say how they feel. They're totally within their right to do that. I think we should allow them to do that on their own, though. When it's one letter with very minor changes coming from a bunch of different commissioners and committee members, it looks like a concerted effort. And, you know, it can appear that it's coming, you know, from a council member and it might not. It absolutely might just be them, you know, organizing amongst.
Maybe they're all part of the mob or they're all part of some other group.
They might be organizing them.
Sharing the left.
We, we don't know. But I think that, you know, it's probably better practice for them to not send the exact same letter.
I think one of the difficulties is that sometimes when those things are generated, there's inaccuracies and they're getting repeated and nobody's the wiser.
I say something here as a member of OSEC.
Sure, Michelle.
I was, I was upset by that whole situation because even if the chairperson from our committee had not reached out to each of us, I would have been upset to have a letter to the council signed by the chairman of OSEC with a view that I didn't agree on if we had not voted on it in an OSEC meeting. We are very careful about.
And if that's the case, and there is something coming from OSEC that they have discussed or any of the committees or commissions, and they've discussed it and they said, this is our view. We'd like to support this view to the city council on their agenda. And so it's signed by the members of OSEC or Public Arts or whoever it is. You know, I can see that is just fine. It, it, you know, we all should be aware that if you're sending a letter as a citizen, you sign it as a citizen. And if you're sending a letter as a member of OSEC, now, doesn't mean that in the body, you can't say, as a long-term member of OSEC, I believe that, you know, supporting green growth is good. Doesn't mean you can't say that, but you know, it's signed at OSEC.
Right, exactly.
You know,
Thank you.
So I just want to get clarification. So like if constituents who happen to be on a committee or a commission, you know, approach one of us about an idea. And we say, well, yeah, okay, I think that's a pretty good idea. You know, why don't you write a letter to the council, right? We've gotten lots of written communication from you, Michelle. Right? I mean, I remember when you, when you were in this room first applying for open space and ecology, you made it very clear. Hey, I'm not giving up my right to, to, you know, to criticize you, you know, when you're on the diet. Right? You know, if, if, if you're gonna, you know, fence me in, I don't want the job, right? And I respect that. And so I think, you know, if our committee members, commission members want to advocate for something, I think that's totally fine. You know, in regards to that letter, or is all written the same or kind of the same? I think you need to talk to them before, you know, making any kind of assumption.
You're, you're speaking, I'm talking about the same thing that.
Well, I don't know. Okay. Well, you know, that's the thing, right? So I think, but I think, you know, I, I think that I'm trying to understand what you're saying is that you don't want a council member to, like, say, address the committee or commission members and say, I want you to advocate for my thing. Right? Is that what you're expecting? Right? Okay. And I, I, I agree that.
That is, that is why I brought up us having a meeting with the committees and the commissions, call it a retreat, whatever. Because some of them are very confused as to how to respond to certain things that sometimes they feel pressured to say or do. So it fits into that realm.
Yeah, you know, I.
And, you know, and we're talking about, I've seen things on the planning commission that were incorrect because of ignorance, not because people aren't smart, but they were ignorant to a particular topic and they made a mistake that we corrected. But I, I think if we have this retreat, three or four hours or something, so people can say, here are my, here's my stuff. Here's what I want to know about, you know, can we do this? Can we do that? Is it appropriate for this? As it was in this particular case, most of the people involved did not respond because they went, ooh. Boogeyman, I see a boogeyman here.
Well, you know, I, I remember when you were on the planning commission and Ray Miller.
Oh, that's not good.
Right? But I'm just saying, right? I'm just saying that, that was a situation, right?
Wrong, I think.
That was wrong.
Very wrong.
It was wrong. I'm bringing it. I'm not going to go into it, but I'm just saying that that was inappropriate.
Oh, it's totally.
Right? To say, I, I'm a member of the public and I'm addressing you, right? We know what hat you were wearing. So, you know, having the, the meeting, you know, or whatever with our and committee members makes sense, right? We should want to hear from them, right?
We all need to be on the same page.
But again, if there's something that, a pet project that I have, that I would like looked at by OSEC, that should go, or whoever, that should go through legitimate channels to be agendized by OSEC and put on their work plan, whether that's through the subcommittee that works with that particular board or commission. I think that's appropriate. To try to get something added to their work plan. I mean, I would, if I had a pet project on Public Arts, I wouldn't necessarily go to Madison. I would go to Clay.
Right? Because that wouldn't be appropriate.
Wouldn't be appropriate. I could go to Clay and say, I think that we should put little round balls all over the park to keep people from trampling the grass. And, you know, can we put that on to Park and Rec's agenda? And he'd be like, oh, no.
He'd be like, I'm retiring.
But, you know, I mean, but that would be the proper way, the proper protocol to bring it up. Now, if you're standing at the grocery store buying your milk and you get cornered by somebody who says, I think we should put little balls in parks so people can't play and not trample the grass. And it's like, oh, that's a great or a crappy idea. Take it to Park and Rec. I mean, there's different ways to deal with things where you could say, that's a great idea. But you need to go through Park and Rec.
I think that.
And I see Jason as his hand up. So after you.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to second Karen's notion that if the city could scare up a few hundred dollars or thousands to. or thousands to to do the retreat that you're talking about, I think it would be so lovely for all these commissioners and committee members to know how, I mean, Colleen called me my first week or so and asked me a whole bunch of questions about how it was going. And and that's the most in-depth I've talked to anybody at the council, because she was just basically asking me what's going on. And if these people could say, hey, this is what's proper to say, this is what's legal. And as we've gone into that today, we're going beyond the legal, we're saying, we're looking at the ethics. It's really transparent and wonderful. So if we could do that, probably cost a couple thousand dollars, but you know.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, um, recently, Caroline said to me, how many times do I send something out? And I said, as often as possible to as many places as possible, because we're all busy and we all miss things. And we're not just looking at our computers or our phones all day long. So it's like, send it out over and over again. It's the same with the with the rules and regulations about how things get done. Let's do it over and over again. Let's go over the Brown Act again.
We do Brown Act trainings pretty regularly, but I think that there's something missing in that there isn't like, you, the, usually the chair and the co-chair, they'll meet with their council liaisons once or twice a year. And that's only touching a small fraction of that body. We've never had like a sit down with everyone at once to answer any questions about protocol. And you actually brought that, you've brought this up many times.
We have a subcommittee and I did a lot of work on it. And then I got mired with a lot of P C E stuff. So I have a lot of material that I collected of ideas of what could be done. But there's also the problem, what you bring up as well, is that we have these different, I don't know whether you wanna call them charters for every different subcommittee, or not subcommittee, but committee or commission, and they're not all the same. And somewhere, I think they need to be uniform or else each one's going by slightly different rules. And so that's part of what I hadn't even gotten that far with it, was to have some idea of suggestions of things that we should probably look at before sitting them down and saying, well, your rules are different and yours are different, to see what kind of uniformity might just make it simple.
But the rules are different between commissions and committees.
They are. That's what Colleen just said.
They should be, because the committee does not make legislative recommendations the way, they don't vote on things the way that a commission does.
I I understand what you're saying, but I I'm talking little details in in those charters. So they're they're different in ways that don't make sense.
So so perhaps a takeaway from this is would we want to have a subcommittee, uh, an ad hoc for a code of conduct to sort of draw up a code of conduct, not just for us, but also for, um, which would certainly be way more restrictive than what a code of conduct would be for a committee or a commission. That while probably wouldn't, I mean, is not going to be legally enforceable, but just sort of setting out the rules and refreshing us on, you know, what's best practices? And and maybe rather than a code of conduct, a best pack practices. Um, and we might wanna do that. You know, the retreat I think's a good idea. It'll be very difficult with the
So many people.
amount of people to find a date that works for many or most. Um, certainly getting everybody in the same room is is gonna be a public nightmare.
I think it should be in segments. I think we should have committees and commissions and maybe have two days over the course of a couple of months. But I wanna re- make sure we're on the same page about what you said, Cliff. So the understanding is, and that your constituents might approach you, they might be members of our committees and commissions. They might feel a type of way about an issue. And you advise them, write to the council, come to a meeting, anything we would always say, right? And I think that that's fair and I think that 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 should happen. I think that what becomes more of a problem is if you get into the nitty gritty of what they're writing and what they're saying, or organizing a group, you know, taking a more hands-on approach than just saying, here are the channels, this is how you reach us. We wanna hear from you. If you feel something, tell us. I think if you're in a more intimate part of that planning process of trying to influence the council through commissions and committees, that's where it becomes, I I think that's where it becomes tough. And so if we all make that agreement that we're not doing that and we get a form letter or something, I think that we can presume if we're all acting in good faith, that that has come because they are communicating with each other and they're not being coordinated by a member of the council.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. But, you know, like, they might reach out to you because you have some expertise in something, right? Or they might want an opinion on something. So I think that's okay. You know, you guys are on a committee that, you know, you're you're already in it, right? So, um, but I agree that that we shouldn't have council members like saying, hey, I got this pet project and now I'm gonna contact every single committee member or commission member and, you know, try and get them to, as a group, then advocate for something. Uh, you know, I I agree with that. But if they're advocating for something and you happen to agree with it, there's nothing wrong with giving them some support and then telling them, go do the proper channels. I mean, I just wanna be clear because, you know, uh, you know, we're we're walking kind of a fine line here.
What does support mean to you? I guess that's like what, like.
Like, you know, like, you know, like you hear them out.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I don't, I don't wanna be, you know, if Kevin comes to me and has this idea, I just, I don't wanna like, sorry, I can't, you know, or, or, you know, you're you're crossing this line because I, we got this protocol and I wanna make sure that I stay within it, right? And I I wanna be able to have that flexibility and that fluidity. And I think all of us should have that. I mean, I think that would.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna write the letter for them.
No, absolutely not, right? And so, you know, I think that was great that, you know, you had reached out to Jason, you know, to just say, hey, how are things going? I think, you know, it, when when you, when you mentioned that and you said, yeah, you were the only one that did that, it made me think like, damn, okay, that that's cool. I I need to do a better job in making sure that I connect with some of these other committee members and commissioners.
This was a project she was doing.
Oh, okay. Every single part, she went.
Oh, okay. All right. I just thought that you just, 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 you know, making a connection. Okay.
Playing favorites.
I mean, no, haven't.
You know, all I didn't know, so.
It was so good of her to do it. But it wasn't, it was a special project.
Yeah. No, well, I mean, I think that's good of us to, again, you know, to, to be closer to our constituents.
So so back to doing, um, I mean, the retreat's gonna take a little more thought process from staff and certainly, um, you know, a lot more, um, engineering. But a code of conduct. Um, and I think we start with ourselves, a code of conduct for ourselves. And then we can move on to a code of conduct that is, you know, just general guidelines of how committee and commission members, um, can voice their opinions in a safe way.
Are we talking about, like, I think really a code of conduct for commissions and committee members should be really relevant to applicants.
I I think what we have here is good, right? Because it's dealing with, you know, applicants, developers, but like just out in general. I I mean, nothing against any of you, but I don't want you to tell me what to do. And I don't think you want me to tell you what to do, right?
But the the, the committee members shouldn't send a letter from themselves signed as OSEC president if it's just from.
Well, I think that's, you know, where, you know, maybe, you know, staff, you know, talks to that person and say, hey, you know, don't do that again, right?
But no, information, we're not, not calling out anyone.
And we're not always aware of that.
Yeah.
And also the case that happened with us was about an applicant. It was about overall development fees.
I think we need to chew on that one a little bit more and maybe that should go back to the subcommittee that's working on that thing. But I think that in the interim.
Our code of conduct, we can certainly.
Or we can do applicant. I mean, I think it's fair to ask the planning commission to not meet one-on-one with B D I. Like, I think that's fair and that's easy for everyone to agree to. And then anything beyond other codes of conduct, I mean, this is also stuff we can just talk about at the retreat and just inform and say, hey, it's probably not a good idea if you do X, Y, and Z instead of just drawing up something formal. And I think that wouldn't be received as well. Just maybe say, this is best practice. It just, you know, if you write something as the chair of whatever, it should be something y'all have voted on. And you're representing and you've gotten, you've discussed at a meeting that you're gonna come and represent or you're gonna come and speak at a meeting.
Well, we do that, we do that in in some aspects when we'll get a request from someone to write a letter of support or non-support on a topic that's at the state level. That it's like, oh, can we all agree that the mayor signs a letter that we are for or against this? And we do that in mayor council matters. We don't vote on the verbiage. Sometimes it's like, well, we wanna see what the verbiage is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and.
But.
And even further than that, say, you know, at the, um, at some of our meetings, like on C CAG, we discuss what we don't like as a county, all the twenty cities, and form that letter there. So I think, you know, some of our committees and commission members would be happy to hear how all of those processes work. It's like I'm on the legislative committee for C CAG and we're looking at all these bills going, yes, yes, no, no, never, you know? And voting on those kind of things. I think that would be helpful for them to.
And and you're just voting to say, we support it or we don't support it. You're not voting to, you know, enact it or not reenact it. So, you know, but I think that, you know, do we want to form a subcommittee on a code of conduct for us? And do you, or do you think that staff took enough from this meeting to sort of generally flush out what we talked about that we'd like to see?
I think we need to flush it out a lot further.
Well, I think it's gonna need to be flushed out further. But do we, do we wanna proceed with doing something like that? We certainly aren't going to vote on it. But we could, um, you know, get ideas of who would like to be on that code of conduct subcommittee um, so that we can at the next meeting, um, vote on that subcommittee or or make it a public, publicly official. So would it be better for staff just to, um, if if you're interested, let staff know? Or do you, would, would we wanna make that decision?
We put it on the agenda.
And then we can, we can say then, yeah.
Okay.
I feel it's pretty clear. I don't know.
I mean, I, I, yeah.
I was just gonna say, may I suggest that a code of conduct has no teeth. It's not legally enforceable. I would suggest it not just be, here's, we kind of all agree. I'd say we should sign it.
Oh, I I agree that I think that we sign the code of conduct, that we agree to abide by these rules. Um, it's not gonna have teeth that, oh, you don't abide by them, you're gonna be kicked off.
It's 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 a, uh, an affirmation.
It's an affirmation.
We have agreed.
So in the community, I think it gives the community a little bit of comfort, right? I think it's been really damaging and dangerous when there's so much hearsay about what people are doing behind closed doors and what's happened in the past. And, you know, we've heard some of that this evening. And I think that if we have something and we all, we, I think we all act very responsibly, very ethically all the time. And so, but I think that there's mistrust in the community and this is a great way to show them that we're all making commitment to abide by this code of conduct. And whether it has teeth or not, I think to publicly sign it, to publicly say that these are what, this is what we have agreed to going forward, we need to start repairing what's happening here. And I think that it's, it takes us, but it also takes the community. It takes the community saying, okay, this group has decided, our council has decided, this is how they're gonna conduct themselves going forward and we're gonna give them the benefit of the doubt that that's what they're doing. And if we feel that they are not abiding by this code of conduct, we will hold them accountable. But if we all say we're going to do it, I hope that the public will, you know,
Hold them to the fire.
Will support that, but also will give us the benefit of the doubt in knowing that if we've all made this commitment, we've all signed it and that that's what we plan to do and let us show you that that's what we're doing.
The difficulty is that what we're talking about is taking place in cities all over the country because public trust in government is at an all-time low.
Yeah.
And so I think part of it important to be said also is that we should not be offended if the public automatically is not trusting us.
No.
But somewhere that needs to change or else government doesn't work. It's that simple.
Yeah. Well, this is our step, I think, in unifying. I, we have to, we have to repair, we have to move forward, we have to work well together. We are at the precipice of some of the biggest decisions that Brisbane will ever make. And if we can't unify now, we're gonna be in a really bad spot.
We need that public support, but more important, their participation. And I'm not naive about that. How many council meetings have I sat through where there's nobody in the audience or one person? And I know it's easier to go on Zoom and I'm grateful for everybody that goes on Zoom.
But a lot of times there's nobody on Zoom either.
I, it sounds, J- Jason has.
I applaud you, uh, saying, let's have a code of conduct. And I know you, uh, your honor, uh, were the one that brought up the pledge of allegiance. There's no teeth in the pledge of allegiance, but we say it to affirm what we're doing.
And without mental reservation. Oh, my God, if I didn't have, if I didn't have mental reservation about doing this job.
I think to go beyond anything, and also saying about inventory and trust, it's it's so, so important.
I did one thing to say. I think that one of the things that would help with, um, the public trust is to be more forthcoming, within the limits of the law, about the agendas on closed sessions. I think people feel very, uh, upset when they don't know. Obviously, there's things that happen in closed sessions that you cannot discuss, like real property negotiations and, um, there's a few things. But I do think it's important eh, to be somewhat more transparent than what is published in the agendas. For instance, what property litigation are we talking about? Or, you know, what, what, you know, negotiation is it about? To to the extent that you can. I understand that you can't always, and I know a lot because I pay attention. I've paid attention for years. And so I know it's what you're talking about. A lot of times, even though it's very obtuse to anyone else or most people. But I think if you could be a little bit more transparent, Tom, as much as you can be, um, I I think it would really help people to.
Well, I I will say that there is nothing we do in closed session that we, um, are not legally entitled to do in closed session. And has a very public reason for that.
Yes, I understand that.
So.
If you're in litigation and we talk publicly about any part of that litigation, we are also telling our opponent our strategy. I mean, so even if we could, we wouldn't.
Litigation or negotiation. So, yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you the feedback that.
I understand, um, people.
Tom will take that.
Think everything that's, uh, backdoor. So.
So, eh, um, just, just to have clarity, so the code of conduct, is is this the document that we're talking about? Or is this a different document?
We're gonna form one of the four ones, rules, rules one through twenty.
Okay, but I mean, like, the, so we're gonna direct staff to take this and.
No, no, we are going to form a subcommittee at the next meeting, when we can actually do that, because we can't make any decisions here.
Uh, no, I I know that, but I mean, but.
So we're going to form a subcommittee.
Okay, alright.
And they will take whatever has come out of this meeting and elaborate, pare it down, do whatever that subcommittee feels needs to be done to come up with a document that satisfies the need.
And or add more things because they they bring it back to.
Because there's more.
All right, all right, okay. I'm just, I just, just some clarity. I mean, like, this makes sense, you know, to me. Um, but it's not really, that's, this isn't really a list. This was prepared on what are legal requirements, what's worked in the past, ideas for moving forward.
But I think we have some more specific things that have caused issues that we wanna address so that they don't continue to cause issues.
Okay. No, I I think that that that's fair.
And, you know, I mean, kindness is rule one oh one and not trying to be. Be the perennial politician where you're, you know. Backstabbing anybody, we don't wanna do that, it's not a good look, it's not good for the city, it's not good for our mental health. I, we have wasted so much anguish. On trying to deal with the tensions within this group and what's gone out to the public. Um, that I've, I've lost my patience for dealing with. That kind of response. And so I think we've wasted enough time on. Whatever the accusations are that have been running around this city. And we need to move on and I think this is the best way to move on.
So uh. I agree about, you know. Dealing with the situations, having good dialogue, I think tonight was, was uh, very constructive. Um, you know, I I do think though. By not dealing with something, if it's a discomfort. Actually can be not beneficial to the community and uh, the council as a whole. I mean, this job has discomfort built into it, it's just part of the scene and so because of that. You have to have that tough skin to deal with it. But it's also really important that we talk about it together. And if it's not one of those closed session items. Being okay with talking about it in an open session, so with that, right, you know. Eh, you know, after our our last council meeting, you know, I did approach the city attorney. Cause I wanted to talk about your comment that you made and. I wanted to see, you know, can we have a open discussion? And then also hopefully that translates to providing some guidelines for. Uh, how we conduct ourselves with developers and applicants, right, and so here we are tonight and I. And I'm really glad that that had a pertinent, and you know, and Tom said, hey, that sounds like a good idea. But you're gonna need the mayor to agendize it, so I wanna thank you for agendizing it and in having this workshop. Right?
Like I said, I think it's something we need to get through. We need to get over, we need to get past, but we need to do it in a way that we know it's not gonna repeat itself. And we know that it's not going to have um, sidelines and side discussions that are going on. You know, in the Facebook realm that none of us can respond to. That make it look like we have, you know, some issue that is, goes beyond. What is really happening, because it all goes down to speculation and innuendo.
Absolutely.
And we can't respond to it. And and we can't, you know, if you try to respond to it one-on-one, it's like, well, do it in public. Well, we can't spend every day going kumbaya. We are all individual people, we need to make our own decisions, sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. And, you know, there's a reason in our minds that we make the decisions we make, so. Thank you for saying, great for doing this workshop. I think that, you know, we've tried this in the past and it wasn't successful. I'm hoping tonight is successful and it alleviates some of the fear and. And that's on the council and the stress that comes with being a council member. And lets the public know where we're coming from, I think we're all trying to be good, honest people and do the best job we can for Brisbane. And and that's the most important thing, we can all disagree on how that path goes. But, you know.
And sometimes we do.
And we do.
I I think because you brought up Facebook, that it's important to say that people are gonna say whatever they want, we can't stop them, you know, and. And if that's the channel that they would like to express themselves, okay. I wish people would call us, I wish people would email us, I wish people would come to meetings, thank you for everyone who's come to this meeting. It really is incredible. Um, and but with that, I will just say that it would be nice to know, and I make this commitment, that. There are conversations that go on, I hear about them and I, I am not going to fan any of those flames. If there's somebody that's done something that I don't agree with and people are talking about and they're coming to me and talking about it. I'm not going to fan those flames, I think that there's been a lot of fanning of the flames. And it's just made the situation worse and worse and worse. And I know people who respond, they get into, you know, these conversations and if it's somebody I'm close with, I'll say, hey, knock it off. Stop. You gotta step back, don't respond. Or, you know, you're, this is not accurate what you're saying, this is not helpful, this conversation is just leading to more divide. And it would be nice if there are people in this room who are close with people who are doing that. To say, listen, we're trying to move forward and, or maybe you don't have all the facts, here are what the facts are. You know, the more that different factions are ripping each one of us. Down, it's not so long election season, like I get that that happens during election season, okay. I think it was particularly ugly, the last cycle, um, and we're going into another cycle very soon. And for us to move forward, I think that it would be great if we could all make the commitment that. We are not gonna fan the flames of anyone talking poorly about anyone else. Um, on social media and if people still choose to do that, that's their prerogative, but I'm not going to play a part in trying to influence. Or, you know, congratulate somebody for saying something nasty on Facebook or encourage them. I am totally, I'm totally.
I I agree with that and, you know, the last round of Facebook things that happened, there were. Quotes from a workshop that the people who made the quotes weren't even in the workshops. And so it had to come from one of us at the table, because there were no people who logged in. And it wasn't a secret meeting, but the quotes that were made were not. Accurate. But they came from someone in this room. And so that's something that's really difficult when. It's hearsay that's getting quoted and put in quotes and it's not true. Um, you know, and again, that's something that maybe can come out of the um, uh, code of conduct. Um, but, you know, it's really hard when someone's quoting you that wasn't at that conversation. And, you know, we've all been misquoted in, in ways, we've been misquoted in the papers, we've been misquoted with our intentions. And and that should stop and I'm not sure how. Um, that that stops, but it'd be good if it did.
Yeah, no, I I agree, you know, misinformation, um, saying things that become rumors and. Innuendos, I I think is inappropriate.
You know, and and on Facebook, I can't even.
So, I mean, I, I, yeah, I'm on Facebook, so I don't know.
Even say, you know, I'm being misquoted.
Uh, yeah, I I, you know, I don't know what, uh, you know, said on Facebook and whatever, but. Wh- what I did want to address tonight was something that was said on, on the dais, right, so there was no, like. Uh, you know, something that wasn't quoted correctly or whatever, I mean, it was a statement. And so, um, and so why, I, you know, it was the comment that you made prior to appointing or. Making the recommendation to appoint Terry and and Karen, and so, um. You know, a- after the meeting, I did ask you, you know, why you you made that comment and, um. So I'm, I'm just kinda, I'm confused because I wasn't, just cause your response. Was, I didn't know what that meant and so. And not only am I confused, but I I think a lot of people who watch the meeting in the public are are confused. And so I I think it would be really helpful to just to 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 talk about it.
I'd be happy to.
Can I, can I interrupt you for one second, uh, Tom, do you have any issues with this?
Uh, legally, no, um, it's a workshop and it's gone way beyond the agenda, all I would caution the council is tonight. Uh, please do not take any formal action or commit to any formal action, you're gonna have to agendize it, we'll agendize it. For the appropriate meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Sure, so we had in November, a workshop was an open meeting where we talk about. Who would be the mayor next? And at that meeting, nobody was starting, Madison was the mayor, said, who wants to start? And so as usual, she looks at me and says, why don't you start? I said, okay, so I'm trying to think and. She said, you know, I don't know if you said or if I said, what were important criteria? In terms of choosing another mayor and I said, for me. The top of the list is that we commit, that the mayor. Will make the commitment not to go outside the council and negotiate with developers. You said.
Oh, ha, yes, happy to do that.
And?
I was absent.
Okay.
I was in Australia with my mom, my sick mother.
Okay, so this had come up before. I've asked the question several times for two years.
And absolutely.
Would not respond.
Okay, so.
So I made a statement. Excuse me, reflecting my opinion, not yours. Not yours, not yours, it was my opinion and because I have to. Form the basis for how I vote, I was hoping you would say yes, but you didn't. You didn't, because I I might have felt differently. I I wanted this council to work together. That was important to me.
So, um. You know, the meeting wasn't recorded, right, it is, we're, we're gonna interpret the way that we interpret it. You, Madison opened it up to you and and you made your comment. Or comments. Madison then wanted clarification, so she asked for clarification. And then, uh, once you provided the clarification, I, in my opinion, I thought all of us. Agreed, maybe I didn't say, yeah, I I'm I'm totally on board with you, but I nodded my head and it's like, okay. Well, okay. You know, that's, that's your, you know, that's your thing, I mean, to me. I, I wasn't, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, if I was not in agreement. I would say, you know what, Colleen, I'm not in agreement with that.
Cliff, I'm gonna.
And so I guess if if I didn't, you know, respond in the appropriate way to you. Then that was okay to sit on the dais and state this, what you consider to be a fact.
It was, I said it was my opinion.
Oh, I know. You're, but I know you're, but you know, when you make.
I didn't say. You on the dais, I said nothing about you on the dais, nothing.
I, I know you didn't and.
And because I had asked the question for two years. I brought it up because we've had a problem getting a response and so I thought. You asked me what was important. That was important to me, may not have mattered to anyone else. And and what I said to you the night after that meeting in December is I said, Cliff. I hope you have a wonderful holiday and then going forward, we can move forward. Because many times you and I agree, we'll disagree, it's the same with everybody here. But we need to work together.
I I totally agree.
And I'm not, and you said, well, in the past, Madison did this and that, and I said, I don't care. I'm concerned about going forward tomorrow. I said, that is my goal, that's why I asked the question that night.
So I, a- again, I didn't consider you asking a question, I I considered you making a statement. Which I am in agreement with, I didn't, again, I didn't jump up and say, I, you know, I nodded in agreement, to me, it goes without saying. So, I I know that you brought this up before. With an incident, I asked you, I said, was it that incident and you said, no, it wasn't and you know, when. When you asked me that question, it wasn't like, you know, like out of the blue. You created this, you know, case and then basically accused me of. Doing it and is it true and I, and 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 I I'll be honest with you.
A minute, wait a minute, I I.
Again, I'm, I'm having my own interpretation, right? Right, you gave, you, you're saying what you're telling me and I'm telling you how I interpret it. Right, and that's how you interact professionally, you say one thing, okay, well, you know, I. Eh, the way that I, um, you know, uh. You know, heard you say was that it it was more of an accusatory type situation. And that then I had to respond to the accusation and I. And I I I just wanted to, you know, just put it out there, I mean. You know, I didn't have the best attitude that night, because I would, I took it personally, right, to me, I looked at it like. Who in the hell does she think she is to accuse me of something that's completely false? But, you know, and so that's why I didn't wanna like answer it, but then I did reach out to you one-on-one and I said, you know, Colleen. If you have an issue with me, hey, let's professionally as as council colleagues, let's meet together, let's. Let's have coffee, let's talk about it.
Did you say that to me?
Oh, well, you replied back today. We had an exchange after that meeting and so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um. You know, bottom line is, right? Making a statement like this. Inappropriate.
In your opinion.
You know.
As to. I was making my decision and I have a right to do that.
No, you definitely have a right to do that. You, you know, I guess if you said, hey, you know. You, you know, I would never support a mayor or mayor pro temp who murdered someone. And if I didn't respond the way that you wanted to, then I guess that makes it okay to then. State that, hey, I won't ever support anybody murdered, you know, I I I'm just not gonna do that, therefore, I'm gonna point this person. Point this person. You, when we had, when I asked. Uh, Terry to put it on this, uh, this stuff on the agenda. Both Terry and Madison were there and and I said, yeah, you know, we need to put this on the agenda, I said, Terry, I mean, Madison, this could be, you know, about you too. Right, Madison said, no, it's not about me, it's about you, you also told me it's about me. You can say that it's not, but you.
I'm getting lost.
Can I interject here, cause I think that maybe there's an outside perspective might be helpful. Colleen has mentioned this several times. As an outsider watching this, I've never seen you outright agree and so to not hear you say that. Like I walked away from that meeting and I was like, wow, Cliff didn't say anything, like we all were like, yes, and Cliff didn't say anything and so. It it.
In the workshop.
In the workshop, it definitely stuck with me and she's brought up se- several times in the past. I think that this has been a really good opportunity for us to clear our names, right, there's been things that have been coming out about me. I'm setting the record straight, I'm saying, this is what happened, this is how I feel, this is what I'm gonna do going forward, we'll focus on going forward. You're airing this out, that's good, you're having the conversation, okay. Because of this exchange, right, now we have this document. And if we're all gonna agree, I thought we were doing such a good job in this meeting. I think if we're all going to agree that this is what we're gonna abide by going forward, everything else has to be water under the bridge. It has to be, because this will get exacerbated within the community and this will be an ongoing cycle that we will not be able to fix. So it's important to air out whatever the problems are, it sounds like it was really just a misunderstanding. And so often misunderstandings become really big things, but today we're clearing up the misunderstandings, that's what this was. And you each feel a different type of way about it, but going forward, the solution is that we're abiding by these. By these, the, these um, guidelines and so no one should have the assumption that you are doing any negotiations on the side. And I can say with certainty, hey, no, Cliff is not doing any negotiations on the side, he committed to doing this and if you feel that he is wavered. Wavered from that, bring it forward and we can refer to the code of conduct and that is what we're, we can't keep. We can't keep going back and I think it's important for you to air out that, like, that hurt you and that upset you and. You know, we can all acknowledge that and you guys can say what you wanna say about it, but I think the focus has to be unity and moving forward. But I think the focus has to be unity and moving forward. And what are we going to do to have an understanding amongst us of how we're going to behave and how we're going to treat each other and how we're going to have transparency and trust? And that's what we have developed tonight and we will solidify in the coming months. Right?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, we need to work together, right? We have to accept that we are the council at this time. And it is totally important that we do that, right? That we respect one another, that we can have the communication that is professional. Right? And I should be able to state something that I feel was not. Right? And you know, and you can take your position like, hey, I I stand by this. I I'm good with it. And you know, and I have to accept that. Right? You know, moving forward, does it mean suppressing things, right? Moving forward means you're okay with discussing things. You know, to think that, okay, we just had this meeting tonight and that's going to be it, right? We're never going to have any disagreements, you know? That's not being, you know, really uh, you know, uh, you know, attentive to how we've operated in the past. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, be better. And that doesn't mean that there aren't moments when we do work well together. But there has been many times and it's been kind of a shit show, right?
Our our voting record shows that we work really well together.
I.
I'm usually the dissenting voice or Colleen is usually.
Well, I, yeah, no, I I.
Usually Terry, but I think it's more likely Colleen and I. So our voting record stands that we typically vote five zero on most things.
Well, I mean, I think that that's probably the case for a lot of councils. I but what I'm, but what I'm, what I'm saying, though, it's not, to me, it's, and and I know this is really where you're going. I mean, it isn't like so much like you got to get to a five oh vote, but you you we we can have good discussions, right, on on all the items, right? And I think that we've done that. And so um, you know, and I like, I'm going to continue to do that, right? But it it doesn't mean I'm not gonna, you know, conform, right? I'm gonna, I'm still going to be myself.
Yeah.
Right? And and so, you know, and maybe that, you know, might rub people the wrong ways, you know, every now and then. That's just the way it is. But when I come to have meetings with all of you, I'm I'm always going to be respectful. Or at least I'll do my best to do that, right? Maybe I don't always have my best and none of us always have our best. But we strive to do so. All right, so um.
Clearly it was a misunderstanding. I just want to interject because I thought you were getting twisted up. Not that I was trying to say that you didn't deserve to air something out that was really important to you or that, you know, we shouldn't have any kind of dissent. I just think like clearly it was a misunderstanding, right? We're talking about this topic right here, which is we're not going to negotiate on the side. And I feel like we solved that.
No, I think I think you're right. I think, well, I think going through this document or this graph, you know, agenda thing here that staff put together, I think it's been really helpful.
Yes.
Right? Um, you know, I I you know, because it's a public meeting, right? I'm just going to be really clear. I've never, you know, what is, I'm I'm going to look at your comment here, negotiated independently from the council, ever. Right? And I don't plan to. So um, I know the statement's out there, right? And there's going to be some members of the public that are going to say, okay, yeah, Cliff said that, but, you know, whatever. A council member brought it up. Okay, well, you know, you can do, you you respond however you want, right? You 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 could make a comment, say, okay, yeah, you know what, Cliff, thank you for the clarification. You know, um, you're saying that there's a misunderstanding, but I don't hear that coming.
No, no, we're talking about the fact that you or I'm hearing that when you sat here during our workshop to discuss who was going to be mayor and vice mayor, that you didn't agree to not do any negotiation. Because I didn't hear you agree.
I didn't say it.
And and so that's the misunderstanding she's talking.
Okay, 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 that that.
Issues. We may have in our, in whatever that we believe could have been done or may have been done. What Madison is trying to say is let's go forward. If that happened, it's water under the bridge. We're moving forward.
Yeah.
And and that's something that we're trying to agree to do going forward with the code of conduct that 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 kind of misunderstanding can't happen again.
I think that's that's.
And it's it's very possible that this code of conduct is not going to cover every situation that we feel is unbecoming of a council member or not team building of a council. But that's something we'll have to cross when we cross that bridge.
Mm hmm. Yeah, no.
You know, in the nego, when we talked about in the workshop on who was going to be mayor and vice mayor, and this has come up in the public a lot, you said mayor or nothing. Flat out, mayor or nothing. And 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 so for me, that was a demand I couldn't meet. And so when you said mayor or nothing and it got translated to agree with us or get off the pot, I forget exactly what the translation was. Um, that's not what it was. It's you were making a demand that you wanted to be mayor or or not. And you said that and you said it more than once and you repeated it. And it's, we took a break so you could think about it. And you came back and you said it again. So that's why it went the way it did. And people can think that's unfair or not. But it is a decision that we made and then it got voted on and codified.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's not something that it was, you know, us against Cliff or Cliff against the world. It ma, it probably felt that way. It felt personal. But what we're trying to do is move forward and say, as long as we can agree on the conduct and how all of us need to do our jobs and live with ourselves with the decisions we make and have uphold our own ethics and the ethics that we come to agree on, then we can move forward.
Yeah, you know, I.
That's that's what we're trying to achieve here.
I I I get that, right? And, you know, moving forward is something that I've, I feel like I do every time that I engage with you. I don't think I bring any kind of negativity to our meetings. You know, I feel like I'm engaged. I know the material. You know, if there's something that.
Again.
Right? So but you know, you bring up this workshop and you and you lay out how you think it was. And I and I I wasn't gonna like talk about that, but you brought it up because you're, what you're doing, you're trying to set the the history. And of course, we don't have a recorded meeting, so we, we, you're, now you're going to try and record it here. You talk about like moving forward and like moving on, right? That was what I started with when I, you know, when uh, we asked about like who should, you know, be the mayor? And I said, you know, I think in the um, you know, in the effort to actually move beyond from the year before and um, you know, acknowledge that that we've, we've uh come together and that we're not going to hold any grudges, any items from the past and that we can move forward with the decision of like, okay, we we've let that go. Right? You haven't been the mayor for eight years. You've been the mayor twice during that time. Now you're the mayor during, twice during that time. So maybe, you know, why don't, you know, could we all kind of come together and say, all right, Cliff, maybe, you know, because I have to advocate for myself, right? No one else is, right? So maybe in the goodness of coming together, uh, could I be the mayor? You guys offered the mayor pro tem to me. And you know that you had offered, you know, made, you know, offer in the past that then didn't get fulfilled because whatever reasons that you had, right? Which happened to be the same reasons from before, at least in my, you know, again, I, it's in my mind, right? So you have, you know, uh, you know, an opinion of it. You know, saying that I demanded this is not true. I I I felt that, you know, as a, as a peer, as an equal to all of you, that I deserved to be in that leadership position. But you all didn't feel that way. And the thing is, in the end, you have the right, the council's right to do so. And you know, I, okay, that's fine. You know, I accept it. I don't think it's right, but I accept it. You know, we talked about trust. There was a lot of talk about trust. And, you know, and I talked about it at the council meeting. I I don't, you know, my interpretation of trust is different. And but that doesn't mean that I'm not going to trust you, right? I, you know, I I it doesn't mean I'm not going to come into a meeting and, you know, respect what you have to say. I'm going to do that. I'm going to treat you as an equal. You know, when someone shares with you how they're feeling, you can take a defensive stance or you can listen to what that person is saying and say, okay, well, you know, maybe, maybe there might be something there. Maybe there's something that you're saying has some truth to it. Maybe, you know, I've been, you know, putting up this, this wall and you know, maybe I need to put that wall down so I can then, you know, get where you're coming from. And I, you know, I, you know, I it's been, it's been awkward. It's been difficult. No question about it. But, you know, I accept it as it is and and I'm just going to continue to work with you because, you know, it's the people, like, the people elected us, right? And that's who we serve. And so no matter what happens in my interactions with you, I'm always going to, you know, look to the people that that we serve for inspiration and for, you know, uh, you know, some, some spiritual healing, you know, every now and then it feels, you know, when I get feedback from the community, it shows that, okay, yeah, I'm 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 doing something right. And and just one last thing, I know that, you know, I'm kind of on my soapbox here. You know, all the people in my life that I interact with, you four are the only people that that like have this kind of animosity towards me or this like distrust, this kind of anger. It 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 it's bizarre to me. I I try and figure it out. And, you know, it's, but no one treats me that way.
Please don't call me angry.
Uh, well, that's how it feels to me.
You, you.
Again, and again, that's how it, that's, I think that's how it feels to me.
Okay.
So if you're saying you're you're not, then okay, that's what it feels to me.
I think. She's had her hand up for a minute.
Okay, so we've gone down this rabbit hole. I hope to end on this topic.
Oh, we're not, because I need to go down the rabbit hole more.
Okay, then you can go down the rabbit hole further after me. So I would like a commitment from everybody in this room, well, not you guys, from the city council, that if Madison and I are on a subcommittee and then one of the rest of you are approached by somebody with an idea that belongs on our subcommittee, that you won't say, yes, I think that's a great idea. But you will all say, you need to talk to the subcommittee about this topic because we have a massive issue as a result of that not happening. So I'm not going to talk about the issue because it doesn't matter. But I just want commitment from everybody in this room that if Colleen and Terry are on, well, Cliff and I are on economic development subcommittee and somebody starts talking to me or or to you about that, you go, well, Cliff and Karen are on that subcommittee. Take it to them. That needs to happen.
I would make that commitment.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
So I I want to go back to the meeting because I think that we're, this is the last opportunity we're going to have to air this out.
Yep.
And it was really important for you to talk, to bring up my Bristol Myers Swift thing. And in the same vein, and we talked about this in the workshop. And I've been keeping this in and I have been, I feel like this information, you know, is not necessarily bringing us in the direction we want to go.
That's okay.
But I think that it's important because it characterizes the way that I voted the last two years. And I'm ready to let it go. But I think that the public is demanding to know the reasons. And so here, we're giving it to them then. And here is what it is for me. And this is my perspective. This is a conversation between the two of us and you have your perspective and your perspective is there too. Prior to our meeting last year when we had the rotation, Cliff was vice mayor and there was a vote about whether we were going to make him mayor. Cliff and I had a heated phone call. Cliff called me. He asked me how I was going to vote for mayor. And I said, you know, I don't know. And I didn't really want to talk about it over the phone. And he said, well, I just want you to know that if you don't vote for me to be mayor, I'm going to tell everyone that night that you tell people closed session information all the time and you are going to bring up that whole Bristol Myers Swift thing. My perspective of that conversation felt very much like a, like blackmail and very much like a threat. And I responded to you very much that way. I started yelling back at you. You started yelling back at me. It got very ugly on the phone. But I think when someone calls you and wants to know how you're going to vote because the, depending on how you vote, is going to determine whether they're going to say things about you is very dangerous behavior. And it is something that, you know, I think you were caught up in the moment. I think you were really angry. It was a tense time. But somebody who will threaten me in that way over my vote is not somebody I'm going to vote to be mayor. We have never, we had never dealt with it, you and I, until we just had this last workshop. We had never talked about it. We talked about it in front of the whole group. So if I'm going to be a person and and on the dais at that meeting, you did say some of those things. So you followed through with exactly what your threat was. I didn't, but you said all those things. And I I feel like what happened is you took a conversation we had at a context, which was about a closed session information that we can't really get into. And that's why I refrained from talking about this. Um, so I feel that if, if I can succumb, you know, to a threat like that where someone is going to come to me and say, you better, I want to know how you're going to vote because if you don't, I'm going to do this to you. And I succumb to that, that's a very dangerous place to be as a council member. Because what will I succumb to from other influences? Other applicants that, applicants or constituents or whoever that have business before the city? So to me, that was very grave and that has really colored the decisions that I have made and, you know, people may agree with me, they may not agree with me. Colleen's had her reasons why she didn't vote for you to be mayor. Terry has her reasons and I have mine and that's my truth. And, you know, I want to move forward with you. I don't want to talk about this anymore. I don't want to hold this over your head. I think that it was a lapse in judgment. It was a heated time. And I wanted to, I want us to air it out and I want it to be the, in the past where it should stay. But it definitely has impacted my ability to have faith in you and trust in you and respect for you to say you should be promoted to this position. And, you know, when we had the meeting and I, I had called Karen up and I said, listen, I'm trying to move past it, right? So I called Karen and I said, I know that. So I called Karen and I said, I know that, you know, you probably wanna be Vice Mayor, but I am gonna support Cliff. And I don't want you to be disappointed, cuz I know you're not gonna be in this meeting, and I don't want, you're gonna hear it secondhand maybe, and I just want you to know that I'm gonna be supporting Cliff for Vice Mayor. And we had the meeting, and that was not a position that you wanted to accept. So for me, I was like, here is my olive branch of me trying to move past that very heated moment with us. And you didn't pick it up. And I get why you didn't. I think you don't trust us because we've made you mayor pro temp in the past, never made you mayor, I get it. But that just further solidified for me that, you know, okay, we're, we're not able to have a meeting of the minds here. I'm happy we're having this conversation today. Because the only way that this is gonna work going forward is we actually just let all this go. And I am prepared to do that, and I don't wanna, I won't talk about this in the community going forward. But I think that the public deserves to know my experience and my truth that I've been keeping to myself. Because I was afraid that saying this publicly would just hurt us even more, it would just make this even worse. There's unbecoming things that, you know, a lot of us have done, right? Things that we're not proud of, moments that we've had that we look back, we wish we could change. And I'd love to give you an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I'm listening to everything you say. And, yes, it was a, a very heated discussion. You know, when I did call you, I, I, I said, hey, you know, I, I'd like to have your support for being the mayor. Cuz I wasn't sure, right? I mean, you know, when we had the, the, um, the team building workshop, which was not really a team building workshop, it was, it was, you know. But, eh, you know, after the meeting, you came up to me. And you said, you know, uh, boy, you really got beat up there. Are you okay? And I said, yeah, I'm okay. You see, look at, you know, what you did, I didn't think was that bad, because I've done it, uh, multiple times myself. And so, you know, so it's like, you know, so then, you know, we had our, our, uh, meeting, the, the, the meeting that chooses the next mayor and mayor pro temp. It was in this room, or no, it was on Zoom. And you stayed, hey, um, we're gonna, well, okay, let me just go back. So after, you, you know, while we're in that meeting, okay, you know, I could just, I, I mean, I knew that this, this meeting was gonna happen like this. This, I just knew it was gonna happen, right? Was brought up, and I just, you know, so anyways, so when we had the workshop, the team building, right? And, you know, you said, okay, this is how it's gonna go down. You're going to, uh, have, you're gonna make the motion to have Colleen be the mayor. And you're gonna make some kind of, you know, reason for why you should, uh, you know, why you're gonna stay back as the mayor pro temp. That's what you told me, right? And then when we had our workshop meeting about it, you know, you're saying, hey, yeah, you know, Terry, you know, you can, um, you know, say it's about running or something else. And I tell you, originally, I was not going to do it. You know, I'm gonna write to the edge of like, just, cuz, you know, I got emotional, right? And, and luckily Clay and Tom, you know, brought me back down and, you know, gave me good advice. And so, I then agreed to your terms, but I was not going to agree to it. Not at all, because I didn't feel like that was deserving. So then, when, uh, I, when I called you, I wasn't sure how you were going to, you know, uphold that agreement, because I had uh, endorsed Anthony, and I, you know, aggressively campaigned for him. I could see where you'd be mad about that. But, you know, whatever, you know, but when, you know, when we talked, you were really mad at me for doing it, right? You said, hey, you know, you, um, you know, threatened my livelihood. And you talked about, you know, your role as the chamber and on the council, and I threatened that. And so then I was like, okay, well, timeout here. That, that isn't what it's, what it's about. I, you know, I think Anthony was the right person for the job. I should, you know, have an opportunity is, you know, as a, as a member of our city to support him. So, you, when you said, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to, to basically, you know, I don't think I can support you, I got mad, right? Because I felt like you didn't uphold what you had agreed to. Now, you, I, I didn't say that, you know, like, it is, uh, like blackmail. I told, I said, I said it in that, look, you've done these things too. You know, and the reason I mentioned it was because you told, you, this is what you said, you need to be punished. Those were your words. You need to be punished for, that's what you said.
I don't remember.
Well, that's what you said. And so that's what I brought up, these other things. It's like, look, you've done these things, you, these, these.
I would be very thankful.
No, you know what? Look, if we're gonna just air it, let's just air it.
Hold on, I can handle myself.
So, you know, so, look, there, there was definitely some back and forth, and I, I, it was not good. And I, I, I wish, you know, that I, I would have been more professional in that conversation with you. Right? But, you know, it is what it is. But, you, once we had that conversation, and once we had that meeting, I've let that go. Right? And I, and I've, and I show up to work. So, I don't know, I mean, look, there's plenty of, of record out there, you watch any meeting. Am, am I being a jerk? Am I, am I putting people down? No.
I mean, no. I would say that the context, since you're gonna bring up our conversation, I said, hey, you know, it wasn't my problem, it's not that you shared closed session information. Have I maybe said something to somebody that slipped out, and I probably shouldn't, a member of my family? It's like, yeah, like, it's possible, of course, like, we make mistakes. It's what happened with that information, because of who it was told to, and what that person did with that information, that was a problem. That's what I was saying. And I feel like that part of me trying to build camaraderie with you and trying to be like, hey, you know, I feel bad, like, you know, I think that's what's been taken out of context. Um, it did hurt me, it, it did hurt me that you would actively campaign for someone else. Because I felt like we had a really deep friendship for a long time. And we talked about that, and I, I let you know, like, that really hurt my feelings. Um, but I also said, that doesn't play into my, I'm not going to, for what you do in your personal life, let that affect how I'm gonna vote for you, uh, for being mayor. It started off very quick with, hey, I wanna know, cuz this is, this is what I'm planning to say. And I immediately was very reactive, very angry, and came flying back at you. We both have our own versions of what happened in that phone call. I'm just being honest that it's that phone call that really impacted my ability to vote for you. And I, and at that rotation, the rotation before, I said, listen, you know, we wanna, we, I don't think that we should air this out, right? I think that the public shouldn't know that there's this tension. And so, in order to, you know, not bring all this attention to us, it would be good if you just said that you couldn't, you know, be mayor that year, and that you would nominate Colleen to do it, and it would give us a year to work this out. I did say that. It would give us a year to work this out. And then if we're in a better place, we'll make you mayor the next go around. We never got to that better place. And so, we're trying to get there, right? And we have to, I don't know how many times we've talked about all these things, like, we just keep going back to all these things and saying, well, you did this, well, you did this, well, you did this, well, you did this. If we're actually moving forward now, then we are not going to continue that behavior. So, are we making that commitment? And if we are, and we're gonna have a code of conduct, and we're all gonna abide, then we really have to abide. And the actions, the actions is what is going to get us there, right?
So, I, I just wanna say that, you know, I was in on most of the meetings and all the workshops, certainly not on your private conversations. It, it feels to me that we're seeing rewriting of how we listened and how we heard things. Um, and, and there were five other people in the room. And I'm sure that some of the things, how they went down, or what was said, or what the ramifications were, are different in your perception, because they were happening to you. So when things are happening to yourself, they're a little different than when they're happening to someone else. You can look at it a little more objectively, I think, when it's someone else. And I do think we need to get past some of it. And the second here, it wasn't because of the initial transgress, transgression that we needed to work through. That, from, in my opinion, why I didn't vote for you. Um, it was other things that reinforced some of the things we've been discussing tonight. And you came back as it's not democratic, because I've been elected just like everybody else has been. But the, the mayorship is just a a courtesy and an affirmation that your co-council work well with you. It's not the affirmation that your public thinks you're working well, or staff thinks you're working well, or anyone else. And it's who can bring the demeanor that they want. And with the outburst that happened in the last time, and then this most recent workshop, where we were discussing who was going to be mayor, where was demands made. And you said, well, if I'm not being made the mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the same thing as last time. And it's like, and that was a, it was a show. It was sell tickets to the show. And it, it did no good. And at that point, it's like, why would I, cuz that was a threat too. That if I'm not made mayor at this last rotation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna air it out all in public again. And say how wrong you are and how undemocratic you are. It's nothing to do with democracy on who we wanna lead the team. Nothing to do with democracy. It's who we feel can best lead the team. And so, with those items, and there has been some other things that I have heard, they might be rumors, they might be innuendos, that made me feel you weren't right to be the mayor. So, you know, but that's our, you know, the decision that we came up with. You know, in that meeting, and it doesn't mean you're not an effective council member. And it doesn't mean you have any less sway or influence that is given to you on this council. We wanna hear your ideas. Then, sometimes they're different than ours, sometimes they co-align. But we wanna try to move past it. And if we don't have that confirmation that we can move past it, or every time this comes up, it's, well, I remember it differently, and you guys done me wrong, and it's been really difficult. You know, we're not gonna get upset.
You know, like, we have, like, these types of meetings. And then we do move on. We come back to, like, a moment in time where we have to make a decision, and about who's gonna be the mayor or the mayor pro temp. All right? And we have that discussion. I, I, you know, you have an interpretation of it, and we all do, right? I always feel that when we do have these, these types of meetings, it is an attack on me. That's how I feel about it, right? But I don't, again, I don't hold it against you when I have meetings. And I, I, I just, just wanna be really clear that, you know, when we do have our meetings, you know, we're conducting the people's business, we do it. If I think something's unfair, I should have a right to be able to say it. Right? There, there, there shouldn't be like a code of conduct, or it's like a code of silence, right? Well, and so what, and then, you know, look, I, when we had our last workshop, I said that I'm gonna state this. And I'm not gonna attack anybody. I'm gonna just state it how I feel the process is. And I kept it to the process. If, if people take it personally, that's on them, but that isn't where I was at. You know, I, and I mentioned it at the last workshop. Yeah, I was pissed the year before, because you guys made that deal. I wasn't expecting anything, this go around, right? But I thought I'd put it out there in an effort to kind of let bygones be bygones and move forward. And I made that, that, that pitch, but it wasn't satisfactory to all of you. I'm good with that. You know, and I wish we kinda would have left it at that. I, I, I've, now I feel like really just crappy, you know, like, getting, you know, kinda shit from you guys, and then dishing it back out, that doesn't, that doesn't work, right? But in the end, it's, it, it, you know, it's just this moment, right? It's this, this meeting. And we'll move on, and we'll get back to doing what we need to do, which is to hire Clay's replacement, to work on these developments that are before us, and a whole host of other things too. So, um, yeah, so that's where I'm at.
I didn't wanna do this either, cuz I knew this, this is what it was gonna be. And that's what I was trying to avoid last year, when I said, what are we gonna do? You're gonna say, this is my story, and this is my story, and it's a he said, he said, she said. But then also at the last meeting, you said, I think that you should just say what it is. You should just say publicly, if you have a problem, you should just say what it is. And that's what all these people on Facebook have been saying. We wanna hear, what are the reasons? And you said, I think you just need to air it out. I, and when we talked recently, right after our last meeting, you said, the next meeting, you need to just say, I wanna address what Colleen said, and I think that you just need to say, what are the reasons why you didn't want us to be mayor? And so, we have done that. Something that we've been avoiding doing, because I think it's just, it can get ugly and gross. And now it doesn't feel good, right? And it's like, that's, that's what you risk when you do this, cuz it doesn't feel good, because you're saying, you know, it can very much get into mudslinging, which is always what I've been trying to avoid. So, again, are we making the commitment now that we've aired it all out, and everyone got their reasons? And you got, we did what you wanted, where we just said to the public what it is. And you were saying that last year too, just say what it is. Okay, now we've said what it is. And we're all entitled to our own opinions and our own reasons, and people can agree with them or not.
And may I add, though, quoted in SF Gate, we each have different reasons. This was no conspiracy. We each have different reasons.
Oh, the Mean Girls article.
The Mean Girls. Uh, uh, you know, would someone please stop and think that maybe we each have our own brain that makes a decision?
Or four individuals that arrived at the same conclusion. But we are, are going, right? Are we agreeing to that? Are we not gonna circle back to the same thing, like you keep talking about, we keep circling back to the same conversation? Are we going to make a code of conduct that we are going to abide by, or are we gonna start building trust? Are we going, and we are going to air things out when they happen in real time? Hey, you did this, I didn't like it?
Yeah, no, I, I think that is really productive.
Okay. Yes. Or, I don't know, asterisk.
Be brief, we're, we have run, uh, way over.
It goes to show the, that once trust is broken, it's a long bridge back. But I am so proud of every one of you, everyone of you, for making this effort. And I still have complete and total confidence that each and every one of you is honest and has the city's best interest at heart, and I'm proud to have you as my council. So let's move on from you really, because this has been very painful. It's brought back, in my mind, flashbacks of things that went on when I was a kid, that were so horrible, that people couldn't get past. And I'm proud of you all for working so hard to get past this.
See, we didn't make it through a meeting.
On that note.
Michelle, so, we can, um, adjourn?
Dear God, please.
So the meeting is adjourned at nine. So the meeting is adjourned at nine seven, nine eighteen.
Ingrid, we needed dinner at this meeting. I know, Karen said, what?